There is a quorum here. I think the entire planning board is actually present, either in person or online. So we'll begin with introductions, starting in the room, and then going to the folks that we have online. My name is Quinlan O'Connor. I am Chair and a City Member. If you want to start down at the end with Adrian, and then just come down the row.
Hi, Adrian Cotton, representing the county.
Adrian, if you would press the button on your mic.
You know I do this all day. You think I'd have it down. Adrian Cotton, representing the county.
Jean Walborn, with the city.
Mike McCabe, City.
Lois.
I'm Lois Steinbeck, with the county.
Sweetie, everybody. Ken, are you? We can't hear you, Ken. It's good to work out technical issues early, though, before we get started for real. James, you want to go ahead?
Yeah, I am James Sontag, with the county.
And Marcia?
I'm Marcia Idell, with the city.
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me now?
We can.
Okay, thank you. Oh, Ken Devens, representing the county.
Perfect, thank you. So since we have everybody here, we have two items on the public hearing agenda. We will start with the Craftsman Village at Mountain View Meadows, Phase 8, 9, and 10. The order for both hearings tonight will be that we will begin with a staff report, then we'll hear from the applicant, then get into public testimony, proponents and opponents, closing by the applicant, and closing by the staff, and then the board will get into discussion following all of that. So with that, I will turn it over to staff for their initial report. Assuming staff is ready, and the applicant is here, I guess I should check that. Yes, okay, perfect.
Can everybody see my screen?
Okay, great.
Thanks, Chair, and members of the planning board. Tonight, the first item is Craftsman Village 8, 9, and 10. It's a major phase subdivision, and you are considering the preliminary plat. To give a disclosure, this is just a presentation. Please reference your staff report and the draft findings of facts for all the detailed information. This is just a quick, brief overview, thirty slides overview of the project itself for you and the public. Get started? Well, maybe. Okay. Again, this is consideration of a major phase subdivision and a preliminary plat. And the subject tonight is to consider preliminary plat for Craftsman Village Phases 8, 9, and 10 of the crossroads at Mountain View Meadows. Again, this is a major phase subdivision, creating approximately 207 lots, and adjoining street rights away from approximately 32.268 acres, and to adopt the findings of fact and the conditions contained therein for property legally described in the findings. Brief overview, and you'll notice, too, that these fall in line with the staff report, too. Project overview, again, 207 lots. This will be in three phases of development to coincide with the additional or the previous phases of Craftsman Village. There will be three phases. Again, Phase 8, which is intended to be final-platted with sixty lots by December of 2023. Phase 9, which is intended to have sixty-eight lots, to be final-platted December of 2024. And then the final phase, intended for seventy-nine lots, to be final-platted in December 2025. There is a parkland dedication component to this, and they are using an off-site or a dedication in another part of Mountain View Meadows, which is perfectly allowed by state statute, of 2.6 acres, which is required. They are dedicating 3.32, with an excess of about three-quarters of an acre. And that's based on twenty-three point two acres of entire residential lot coverage. There are going to be three actions. You are to consider the preliminary plat, but there are three actions that will be considered. Once this goes to a City Commission, there is a pre-zoning component, annexation, and preliminary plat. And just for the record, the pre-zoning was recommended for approval at the zoning commission last week, if I'm not mistaken. Just an overview of the preliminary plat with a zoom in on the three phases. Again, overview of the open space dedication. This is Lot 1, Block 9 of the Aspen Park portion of Mountain View Meadows. The vicinity map overview of where it's located within the city. Everybody's familiar with Mountain View Meadows. It is just to the east of Phase 7 and west of the city limits of East Helena. And this is in relation to the zoning. Adjacent zoning is R4RO in future land use map. This is designated as urban on the city's future land use map from the 2019 growth policy. Again, three components. Won't go through all these in detail. Pre-zone, which took place earlier. There will be an annexation step, as well as preliminary plat for the major phase subdivision section, which is what you guys are considering this evening. Major phase subdivision, it allows greater flexibility for the applicants by lengthening development timelines, with caveat that each phase must stand on its own. It's preliminary-platted together, but they're going to be final-platted separately. And then each phase is reviewed independently, according to the phasing schedule that the developer has proposed, that I mentioned just earlier, and upon written notice of the subdivision to initiate the next phase. Again, phase subdivision process, we do a pre-application meeting as dictated by state statute. That was held, I want to say, back in the spring, early summer. Then, of course, there's initial submittal, completeness review, sufficiency, and then general review, which just wrapped up. The planning board recommended, they make a recommendation to the City Commission, and I'll speak to later when they made that recommendation. Again, planning board is where we are this evening, and then the City Commission will hear this on March 13th. After all the conditions are met, or any conditions of approval have been met, then the applicant can final-plat the project. I like to give the staff report initially, or in the beginning of the presentation, just so everybody knows upfront exactly what the staff recommendation is. And then the staff recommends a conditional approval of the preliminary plat for Craftsman Village Phases 8, 9, and 10. The crossroads of Mountain View Meadows, phase subdivision, creating 207 lots and street rights away from approximately 32.268 acres, and to adopt the findings of fact and the conditions contained therein for the property legally described in the findings. So again, some more general information. The applicant submitted an application on September 14th. The application was deemed complete by staff on September the 23rd. Application was deemed sufficient on December the 27th. Tonight, the applicant, or this project is represented by the applicant, which is Mark Runkel of Mountain View Meadows, LLC. And to provide the legal description, this is a portion of tract A1, 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 A1A of the amended plat number 3386391, located within the south half of Section 26 and the north half and southeast quarter of Section 35. Township 10, range 3, west, Lewis and Clark County. General location, like I said earlier, it's generally located just to the east of Craftsman Village Phase 7. Present land use, it's currently vacant. There is some aggregate crushing and processing on the site. Adjacent land uses, north and east, they're vacant tracts. To the west and the south, they're residential tracts. Adjacent zoning, to the north, it's still in the county as urban residential mixed use. To the east in the county is urban residential mixed use. I do want to preface, too, through the drafting of our staff recommendation and findings of fact, the city has been working on changes in zoning ordinances and development standards for this. So the nomenclature has changed, but we included what it was previously. South zoning, R4RO, and to the west is the same, R4RO. And then currently, it's in the county as urban residential mixed use. Approximately, this tract is approximately, again, 32.26 acres. And again, land use designation is urban, and this project is in the urban services boundary. And if I speak too fast, please let me know, and I will gladly slow down. Public comment to date, when I drafted this presentation in 2015, we have received no public comments. Public engagement, we placed notices in the IR. We posted signs on the property. We sent certified letters to adjacent and nearby owners at 300 feet, which is above and beyond our 150-foot normal policy, and to the applicant. In total, thirty-eight letters were sent certified, as well as the project was listed on our development, community development's current project webpage. So a brief overview of the findings of fact, and again, I'll do this for the next case as well. Per MCA, there are seven or six findings of fact that we have to evaluate the project on. Impacts to agriculture, impacts to agricultural water user facilities, impacts to local services, impacts to the natural environment, impacts to wildlife and wildlife habitat, impacts to public health and safety. And then MCA also requires compliance with certain requirements, survey requirements, compliance with city subdivision regulations, and compliance with local review procedures. There are some additional MCA requirements regarding easements and physical and legal access. So the first finding of fact, impacts to agriculture. This property is located adjacent to city limits and residential uses. The site is vacant and is not considered as or located near prime farmland. Grade and soil constraints limit commercial ag operations on the site. And we've concluded this major phase subdivision will not impact agricultural or agricultural production. The next finding of fact, draft finding of fact, impacts to agricultural water users. Lack of surface water, irrigation and stock water in facilities. There's no known history of ag water use on the site. And there's no agriculture users or water facilities adjacent to or in the immediate vicinity of this proposed project. This proposed major phase subdivision will not impact ag water user facilities. And again, I just want to preface, these are staff conclusions. Impacts to local services. This development is proposed to be annexed in the city of Helena, and will utilize all available city services, including, but not limited to, transportation, water and wastewater, police and fire, solid waste, and parks. To the transportation point, the applicant provided TIS, which indicated 2,169 new daily trips generated at full build-out. No impacts were anticipated off-site as part of that study, and all nearby intersections will function at acceptable levels according to the provided study. And then all transportation that is going to be part of the project will comply with the city's complete streets policy. Transportation continued. An exception to the city's block length standards is being requested, and I'll get more in detail to that when we get to that section, Section 7, as well as explain the difference between a variance and an exception. Staff anticipates the need to continually monitor traffic impacts as new phases are developed and build-out of existing phases continues. There will be a need for additional level of service and crash data, and that's part of the phase development approach. Non-motorized facilities will be provided, such as boulevard sidewalks, and some included bike-ped paths. Water and wastewater. Water and wastewater services will be provided by the city of Helena in all phases, as they are in the previous phases of Mountain View Meadows. There is adequate water pressure and fire flow. And staff, again, to the point of a phase development, anticipates the need to fully review water service for each phase relative to storage capacity. And updated design reports at each phase of development would be needed. The existing sanitary sewer collection system is built to serve existing new development in the project. Other services that will be provided, police and fire protection provided by the cities, with no impact on current response tons. Solid waste services provided by the city for each individual lot. And this project served by East Helena School District, and they indicated no impact to existing facilities. Parks. As I mentioned earlier, there was a dedication, or there is a dedication requirement per MCA in Helena City Code. Then based on 23.2 acres of residential lot coverage, 2.6 acres are required. Developer is proposing 3.32 acres, and that's Lot 1, Block 2, excuse me, of Aspen Park of Phase of Mountain View Meadows. Parks Board recommended the proposal be accepted by the City Commission, and that meeting took place, and that recommendation was made on January 4th of 2023. Staff conclusion for this finding, the project developer and engineering team have indicated that there will be no impacts to local surfaces from the proposed development. Staff has identified some impacts that will require mitigation conditions to address those identified impacts. Anytime if you guys have questions, too, please stop me as well. Impacts to the natural environment. No historic or cultural significance associated with the property. Site disturbance will require inclusion of landscaping, and this landscaping could be used to introduce plant species not found in the area and to support those that exist but are of concern. And those plant species of concern, excuse me, let me spit it out, is located in the complete findings of fact that's in your staff report. Soil disturbance could increase potential for noxious weed introduction, and there is no anticipated impact to groundwater. Again, because this is served by city water. Conclusion, staff conclusion, this proposed major subdivision will impact the natural environment, but those conditions can be mitigated with conditions as recommended by city staff. Impacts to wildlife and wildlife habitat. Wildlife is limited to smaller mammals, usually in transition in the area. Any occurrences of identified species of concern would be transitional due to surrounding areas or surrounding uses and lack of habitat in those developed areas. Again, those identified species are listed in the detail in the staff report and those findings. Urban development is not intended to meet habitat needs for larger wildlife, and in fact, urban development can reduce wildlife pressures in more rural areas. Staff conclusion, there will not be significant impacts associated with this development to wildlife or wildlife habitats. Impacts to public safety and health. This project is located in a wildland fire hazard area, and it is designated as moderate. Development is proposed to be annexed in the city and provided with city water service designed to provide adequate fire flows. Again, this development will be served by Helena Police and Fire, and all streets and other infrastructure will be built to city standards. Staff conclusion to this finding, this development does not appear to have a profound impact on public health and safety. Any identified impacts will be mitigated with completion of the proposal adhering to city code and standards. And some of the additional requirements that this project, and you should review this project against. Survey requirements and staff conclusion, with those survey requirements, will be reviewed for completeness, appliance submission of the final plat for approval, and a copy is going to be retained in digital format for our records. Subdivision regs, zoning compliance relative to setback, lot coverage of parking, landscaping, and signage, and block length. There's a block length exception request, and I'll go in that in detail here shortly. The applicant has provided a sound justification for those block length exceptions, and it is intended to align road infrastructure and block lengths to the existing built environment adjacent to the new phases, adjacent to the previous phases for the new phases of the development. Again, we'll go in detail of that here shortly. Local subdivision review procedure, staff concludes that the subdivision review and approval process that we've instituted are consistent with the requirements of Montana Subdivision and Plating Act and the Helena City Code. With the compliance with easements, proposed subdivision complies with the provision of easements within the proposed development for the location and installation of any and all plant utilities and infrastructure improvements. Again, the development will turn over city streets to the city for maintenance and right away. Legal and physical access. Internal streets will provide legal and physical access to each proposed lot. The names of all internal streets have already been reserved and approved according to the county addressing coordinator, and some of these are continuation of existing streets within the project. The development does provide legal and physical access to all proposed subdivision lots. Post-preminary plat approval, they will receive final plat if and when the property is developed in accordance with preliminary plat and the condition of each phase has been satisfied. Public improvement plans, again, they'll provide final plat approval, obtain a final plat approval once all public improvement plans are complete and in compliance with city standards, or all required approvals have been completed or properly bonded. There is no indication in the application material or in our review that the proposed development will not follow city's post-preminary plat process. Just a brief overview of growth policy analysis, and I'm not going to read this really verbatim. There's a lot of material here. But essentially, growth policy identifies the area as urban, which fits within the character of the request, and identifies the area of the urban standards boundary as being best suited for this type of development. Again, there's a listing of growth policy goals and objectives. Staff report and findings of fact go in more detail as to what staff believes are met goals and objectives. So, Section 7 of the staff report and draft findings, actually, this is outside of the findings, but it's part of the staff report in Section 7. Subdivision regulation variances, the applicant is not requesting any variances from the city of Helena subdivision regulations. All design standards of the city relative to the subdivision regulations will be met and followed without the need for variances from the city commission. However, there is one exception from city code that is being requested. Block lengths may not exceed 600 feet in length, except when a longer length is needed to meet grade limitations, existing built environment, water bodies, railroad crossings, or industrial uses. Because this is an exception, as stated in the language, they have asked for an exception to this requirement, and that exception has been incorporated into the design of the project. And it's shown on the preliminary plat with those requested exceptions. Block length of 650 feet plus is proposed for practical urban infrastructure design, and this comes from the applicant's rationale. According to the existing built environment that was designed and built to the standards of the city at the time of approval, and this is the previous phases of the development. Previous subdivision regs require block lengths greater than 400 feet. Staff does concur that the above explanations and exhibits included in the preliminary plat application in support of the use of block lengths greater than 600 feet in this development are adequate and sufficient for the governing body to make a decision on the request of exception. The applicant has provided sufficient-
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Yes.
You used the word "exception."
Correct.
What's the difference between a variance and an exception?
So in our code, a variance is laid out processed where it is a public hearing and a separate action.
And that's consistent with the state statute, isn't it?
That's correct. But this particular reference to block lengths, there is an accept built within that language. So we consider that an exception that's allowed and not a true variance of that section. So we've allowed them to accept or ask for an exception of that requirement, and they've built that exception into the preliminary plat. It is still an approvable item, so if the preliminary plat's approved, without any mention or any note of that exception, it's approved with that exception. You can still recommend approval with that exception being removed, essentially.
So you're saying-
But it's just not a separate process or hearing to hear the variance. It is truly an exception that's built into the language that's in city code.
Under the city code?
Correct.
Which controls state or city code when it comes to subdivisions?
I'd defer to Attorney Doctor, but in this instance, it would be city code.
Chair O'Connor, Commissioner, thank you. My name is Becky Doctor. I'm the city attorney for the city of Helena. It's nice to meet you all. The question, as I understand it, is which one controls? And the code is allowed, the city municipalities in Montana are allowed to create code as long as they don't as long as they don't conflict with statute. In this case, there's no conflict with it. The code itself actually outlines the provisions and how you actually apply the exception here. Usually, when a variance is requested, it's for the purpose of varying from the code language. There is no varying from the code language here. This is allowed by code language, and so that's the reason why it's an exception rather than a variance.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
She did a much better job than I did. Again, staff concurs in that the applicant has provided sufficient information to justify the exception requested. And again, the exceptions are listed in more detail in the staff report and findings. And I did think, maybe I didn't, I intended to put those requested exceptions in here, but maybe it's just a blanket. Essentially, the exception, in a nutshell, is to fit the development pattern that is recognized in the other phases of the development for infrastructure, both above ground, underground, as well as to maintain the street pattern. Block length meeting our requirements would impact the existing road network and development pattern.
Sir, may I ask a question?
Yes, more, ma'am.
What is the reason for the limitation of the block lengths in the regulations? And, yeah, what's the reason for those limitations?
So with Madam Chair, or Madam Board Member, thank you for the question. Without going back to see what the deliberation was when City Commission adopted this provision in code, I couldn't really speak to what the intent is. I know historically what is intended by block length requirements, and that is, you know, provision of light and air, as well as to decrease pedestrian travel. But I can't speak to why we recognize 600 feet within the city. I just don't have, I don't have the corporate-
Did you say, did you say to decrease pedestrian travel?
I meant to say increase pedestrian travel.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Make it easier to navigate a development. Again, not knowing corporate, having corporate knowledge when the 600 feet came into being, I don't know exactly what City Commission's intent was. But historically, that's kind of what block lengths are geared for.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. To follow up, staff recommendation. Staff does recommend conditional approval of the submitted preliminary plat for Craftsman Village Phases 8, 9, and 10. This being of the crossroads addition of Mountain View Meadows, major phase subdivision, creating 207 lots and street rights away from approximately 32.268 acres, and to adopt the draft findings, this should say draft findings of fact, and the conditions contained therein for the property legally described in the findings of fact. Following conditions shall apply to the preliminary plat approval and must be satisfied before the final plat may be approved. Condition one, and I'll read these for the record, so bear with me. Condition one, and I'll read these for the record, so bear with me. Proposed or recommended condition number one, project development or developer must submit, along with required commencement notification, for phases nine and 10, updated traffic data and supporting documentation for the study area, study area, to include crash data and traffic volume forecast incorporated in the most recent phases of Mountain View Meadows. They must provide a plan for noxious and invasive species control on any land dedicated as city parkland and all land uses to satisfy parkland dedication requirements of the city, and will be submitted and approved by the city and implemented prior to final plating. Prior to final plat approval, all new storm drainage facilities must be within an easement granted to the city that allows for access and maintenance and restriction, and restricts any encroachments. Proposed recommended condition number four, prior to commence, to the commencement of phases eight, nine, and 10, project developer must provide the city a water system design report that fully evaluates and analyzes the available storage and any additional storage required for the proposed phases of the development. This report must be provided prior to infrastructure review for the initial phase of development. If the submitted water system design report indicates the need for additional storage, said storage must be available prior to final plat approval of the phase which triggered the additional storage requirement, and prior to final plat approval of each subsequent phase of the development. Condition number five, recommended condition five, if the submitted water system design report indicates the need for additional storage, said storage must be available prior to final plat approval of the impacted phase of the development. Condition six, in accordance with city standards, all sewer mains that are at or exceed 75% capacity will have to be upsized by the developer. And I'm going to profess that probably four and five contradict each other and may have to be wordsmithed. They seem to, to get at the same requirement, so we can wordsmith that through deliberation, and I'll take a minute to, to make sure that's, that's appropriate. That concludes this presentation. If there's any questions of staff, we're open. Made mention to the chair that members of city staff are available to, to take questions as well.
Mr. Chairman, this is Lois Steinbeck, and I have a couple of questions on the traffic impact study. How, am I interpreting this right, that there would, there's estimated to be 10, let's see, five round trips a day per resident from the full development at full build out? Are there, what, 207 new residences that would be built after full build out?
That's correct. Per unit, with, with my math being as bad as it is, not pulling out the calculator, I couldn't, couldn't really speak to, to what it is per, per dwelling or per, per unit, but their study did indicate about 2,200 vehicle trips a day would be-
Yeah, that's, that's about 10.
And that's, and that's right. Typically, a single family dwelling, or single unit dwelling, excuse me, generates about 9.57 trips a day.
Even with retirees? Because I noticed that the school enrollment estimate is based on the current type of residences in Mountain View, and says that most of them are retirees.
I'm going to have to let the applicant kind of speak to what his traffic impact study kind of indicated, but typically, those vehicle trips account for garbage collection, the visit of the post, you know, the, the post office, delivery of UPS and FedEx, anything that, that-
Okay.
-that unit would generate, it's just not residents leaving and going, or coming and going, it's everything-
It can be visitors and, all right.
That's correct. Delivery, you know, like I said, trash pickup, that, that sort of thing.
Okay, thank you. That still seems unbelievably high, but okay. Well, Mr. Chairman, may I also ask another question?
Sure, go ahead.
I noticed that the wildlife portion said that there were grizzly bears in the area. I thought that was interesting.
I'd have to review the actual documentation and application file. I do think I saw that in there, but they would be-
Yeah.
-they would be traditionally transitionary. I, I don't think there's habitat there that would support them staying-
Okay.
-for very long, but they would, they would be in transition, just like any large mammal or small mammal would be in that area.
Okay, thank you.
April, is there a way that we can get a view of the folks on the board that are online too? Because I have, I can't see who has questions.
Without stopping, Director Brink screen share to you all and to above, that's the, I can't, that's the only way to stop it.
I could pull that over to my screen room.
Yeah. Here we go. And then enlarge it.
Try to put that, and I'm done with my presentation too, so.
Chairman, if I may-
Go ahead.
Thank you. A question, just a point of clarification on your conditions for approval. Number four, the water system is the infrastructure that will tie into the city upon annexation, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. And number six, in regard to sewer mains that are at or exceed 75% capacity, those are existing sewer lines?
I'm going to have to defer to our homework staff, but I would assume yes.
Thank you.
And I hear Ryan coming, so.
Chair of committee member, is that they look at both the existing sewer line that has been installed, the lift station that is down by the airport, and then the new mains that they have to install too? So, it's all the way down to getting it to the treatment, treatment plant that's down by customer, or by customer.
Thank you, Chairman, if I may. So, all sewer mains that are at or exceed 75% capacity will have to be upsized by the developer. Can I get a better understanding of what that means? Do we have sort of a context to how much sewer main we're talking about, given the breadth of area you just discussed?
Chair, committee member, looking at it is, we just need to take a look at it with each of the subsequent phases, because other things may come in there, and some of our estimates may not represent what reality is. So, we want to take a look at it. With estimates and our models that we have out there, there may only be a couple mains that we would be talking about. There aren't very many, and it's some of them that are the flatter that you get, the less carrying capacity that it has, and we say 75% because you never want to have full flow and gravity sewer, then you have pressurized systems and it becomes a problem. So, we are not looking at any substantial amount to go forward. This has been planned for quite some time, and our models have shown out that it should be okay, but we want to make sure that we pay attention to it.
That's very helpful, thank you.
Are there further questions from the board for staff? All right, I just have one, just to clarify the procedure for tonight. I mean, so there are three staff reports, are we going to do this in three separate pieces for this, or?
So, you'll recognize for me moving forward, me being at the city, I'm overly transparent, so I wanted you to have all the reports that we've generated for this project, knowing that you will not be consuming two of those, but I wanted you to have them, so everybody that is taking action on these, these items have the same reports.
Great, thank you.
So, you're only to consider those items that are in the preliminary plat, staff recommendation, but by all means, review and look at all the others as well, just for informational purposes.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, is the applicant present, and do you want to come up and do your presentation?
Greetings, members of planning board. Chair O'Connor, my name is Greg Worth, W I R T H, with Staley Engineering at 3530 Centennial Drive. I'd like to thank Mr. Brink for preparing the staff report and the presentation tonight. Brief project overview and background, this is a continuation of residential development at Mountain View Meadows. The subdivision specifically Craftsman Village Phase eight, nine, and 10 will create approximately 200 residential units on about 30 acres. And if you're familiar with the site, if you drive up there past the Blue Cross Blue Shield building and where the park is, it's, there's a couple phases of residential development, and this will be further east to the East Helena property line. The project was discussed with city staff at a pre-application meeting on June 13th, Background on Mountain View Meadows, it's been platted all for, back in 2012 was the original preliminary plat approval. So, you know, in the history, you know, Mountain View Meadows has become the primary housing provider within the city of Helena. Mountain View Meadows currently has provided approximately 400 residents with owner occupied condos or single family homes since 2010. Reviewing the growth policy, Mountain View Meadows has contributed 10 of the 17 subdivisions within the 10, last 10 years, providing almost 90% of the single or multifamily residential lots. In 2022, 70% of all the owner occupied home building permits in the city of Helena were issued at Mountain View Meadows. And also, Mountain View Meadows facilitated 12 homes with Habitat for Humanity with means for permanent affordability. The residential lots will contribute a significant tax base, increase in tax base to the city of Helena. Each residential lot typically contributes about 3,500 to 4,000 in total taxes every year. That breaks down to 400 for the county, 800 for schools, and about 2,500 for the city, which includes taxes and the special assessments. So, 200 lots times $4,000 apiece, you know, that's $800,000 per year that the city receives in revenues from these lots. This is all new code compliant infrastructure built to city standards, so it has very little maintenance requirements. We've reviewed the staff report and the subdivision analysis. The project is directly aligned with several housing objectives and goals in the growth policy. The property is currently within the urban standards boundary in the county and identified for urban mixed use development. The project promotes compact land use and efficient utilization of city services. The, we'd had a zoning commission meeting last week on February 14th, where the proposed RU zoning was proposed and recommended for approval by the zoning commission. It said it's currently zoned urban residential mixed use in the county, so they recognize that this is a logical extension of the city of Helena. It's compatible with the existing property at Mountain View Meadows that has recently been annexed and developed. The properties that have been developed have been the R4 zoning, and the RU zoning was developed five or so years ago, almost specifically for Mountain View Meadows. The RU zoning, the difference, primary difference between an RU zoning and an R4 zoning is a RU has a zero, allows a zero lot setback on the property line, and that is contemplated here, requested here to enable potential additional housing diversity to meet market demands. But it'll be all consistent with the existing R4 development. It utilizes existing city services and infrastructure, its proximity and available to emergency services and schools. They'll have, each phase will have extension of city water, sewer, and streets to speak directly to the chairs or the committee members about the trip generation rate. The industry standards, Institute of Transportation engineers, we use a trip generation of 9.43 trips per day, per residential unit. My professional opinion is that is high for a Montana locality, but that's the national industry standard that we use. So, the TIS, it has some conservativeness built into it. We've done, you know, took current traffic studies out there. You know, one thing you will notice is there is a significant volume of home building traffic that occurs, you know, with the certain trades, there's aggressive home building that's happening right now. So, a, a large portion of the traffic that you see out there during the day is actually strictly contributing to the home, the home building processes. The parkland requirement has been met with the existing open space land dedication that was dedicated last year as part of another project that's located in proximity, you know, and, and will have non-motorized tech, non-motorized connectivity as we move through phase eight, nine, and 10. Will create the non-motorized connectivity to the parkland. The parkland dedication is in excess of the requirements. The parks board did recommend approval on January 4th. The project is also in very close proximity to the, the fully developed Mountain View Meadow Park on Alice Street as you drive up to the project as well. And then there's also, as we move into the project phase 10, there's some triangle irregularity where Mountain View Meadows is also contemplating a, a pocket park that would, could also be part of the parkland dedication, but the offsite parkland fully satisfies the parkland dedication requirement. There is a, that minor exception for block length, the 650 feet versus the 600 feet block length requirement, you know, it's a minor exception, you know, in perspective, it's one lot length, so very minor. The longer block length is for compliance with the existing infrastructure that was previously installed and in conformance with prior development regulations being the built environment. Specifically, we're connecting into an existing sanitary sewer main, and where a manhole is, we put that in the center of the street, so it's a logical place to put a street. So, it, it meets the built environment. And it, and also with the existing phases, there were some non-motorized connectivity to help mitigate the block length requirements. And, and being involved in the past subdivision regulation updates, the block length requirements are primarily for non-motorized connectivity, you know, so you don't, people don't have to walk too far to get around the block. So, the non-motorized provisions, you know, mitigate the, the longer block lengths. And we've been using those because the 2010 regulations were different. I can't remember what year they were adopted, but we're trying to meet the current regulations with, with infrastructure that was built in the past decade under the older regulations. We request recommendation of approval. We've reviewed the staff report and concur with the analysis and recommendation for approval. I will point out, we do not agree with the need for the additional recommended conditions for further analysis, but Mountain View Meadows will comply with those conditions. We believe that the subdivision application provided fully sufficient information to determine and evaluate the impacts. The subdivision review process is, is to address the general design of local services, and the imposed conditions are to specifically mitigate the impacts. So, I'm available to answer any questions. Mountain View Meadows is also in attendance, Mr. Mark Runkel, the developer, and Ms. Rebecca Ryland is the director of design, and Mark Runkel would like to address the vote.
Thank you, Mr. Runkel.
Good evening, I'm Mark Runkel, the developer of Mountain View Meadows with offices at 431 South Alice Street. I do want to start by thanking all of you for giving your time and talent to oversee the development in the area, it's very important. I'd like to thank Mr. Brink also, he's done a great job of working with us to get the reports ready, and Staley Engineering has worked very hard on this too, and so I appreciate all of that. You guys know how many regulations there are and how hard it is, so on my own, I probably wouldn't go anywhere. Rebecca and I do hope that you guys can share at least part of the excitement that we have for bringing this new area in. It will result in an attractive, livable, walkable neighborhood with both front and rear garage craftsman style homes. It'll serve a broad swath of Helena's housing needs with houses from about $350,000 work for, like workforce type housing through about $650,000 or so of middle, more middle income homes. And as Mr. Worth mentioned, Rebecca and I are available if you have any questions that we can help clarify- we can help clarify anything. I wanted to say one, I don't know if this is, was clear, clear from what the discussion about the trip generation thing is again, but trips is one-way trip, so if you're thinking round trips, it's about five per day per household, and as Mr. Brink said, that includes UPS trips and that kind of thing, but that's the standard that gets used. And I want to thank all of you in advance for your consideration.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board at this stage? All right, is there any public comment? Any public comment? April, is there anything online?
We have no hands raised online.
Perfect. All right, I'm assuming that staff doesn't have more to add then, since we didn't hear too much more, okay. So we'll just turn it to board discussion at this stage, and then if there are motions that staff would like us to consider in particular so that we get our wording right and those sorts of things. But we can open it to board discussion prior to the motion, if people have comments, thoughts.
Mr. Chairman, this is Ken Dennens.
Go ahead.
Just a few thoughts, and being on the board for five years or so, it's rare that we get a larger subdivision as this with 200-plus lots with one exception, not even a variance, and zero public comments written or, or during our meetings. So I'd just like to thank Mr. Worth and Mr. Runkel for, for handling it on that end. It makes this discussion fairly straightforward in my impression. One concern I do have, I just want to share, and I take no exceptions, but with the language with the, the water storage, you know, and, and listening to Mr. Leland also talk about the 75% full of pipes, I think it's a little different on the water side. I feel like we, I just don't want the city getting kind of locked in and then, and being short on water storage, so I'd like just to say that on the record. I know it's called for future analysis and, but just something to point out, and that's it.
All right, is there further discussion, or does someone want to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Thank you.
So yes, I, I, I did double up on the recommended condition. Our initial recommended condition number five could be struck.
It's repetitive. All right, I would entertain a motion if somebody has one.
Mr. Chairman, this is Lois Steinbeck. I believe the order of motion is first we have to accept the findings of fact, is that correct?
I believe with, that's the county's guidance, but with the city, we're allowed to do it in one motion, and I'm getting a nod from the city's attorney, so I believe we can do it all to, to accept the findings of facts and the conclusions that there are things that need mitigation and the staff's recommendation on the mitigation, all as a single motion.
I would so move that, Mr. Chairman.
Is that sufficient for you?
Chair O'Connor, members of the board, I would ask that you actually clarify, given that we had a removal of the condition proposed by Director Brink, that you are going to accept that as well, and in that you may as well just make the full motion to make it clear.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, let me, may I restate my motion?
Please.
Okay, I move that the board accept the findings of fact presented by staff, that the board accept that there will be conditions or that there will be impacts from the proposed development, and that those impacts can be mitigated by conditions, and that we accept all of the conditions presented except for condition number five, which is repetitive.
Thank you. So the motion is to accept the findings of fact, that there will be impacts, that the impacts can be mitigated with the recommendations by staff with the exception of what is listed as number five. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, I'm not going to repeat it again. Is there discussion on the motion? Any discussion? Let's call one more time for good measure. All right, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? And the motion carries? All right, I, I believe that that concludes the first agenda item. Do folks want to take a five-minute break before we move on to the next one, expecting that it'll likely be a while? Okay, let's, let's take five minutes, we'll be back at 7:01, and we'll get started then. So then we will continue on with the second item on our agenda, which is the Westside Woods Phase Subdivision. The order for this will be in general the same as the last one, that is, we'll start with a, the staff report, and we'll move to the applicant, get into public testimony, closings by the applicant and staff if necessary, and then get into board discussion and motions. So with that, Director Brink, if you want to begin, that'd be great.
Thank you, Chairman. Again, this is a public hearing for Westside Woods Major Phase Subdivision in the preliminary plat. And I will share my screen so everybody can see. And there's no easy place to put that. Chairman, can you see the speakers?
I can, and I also pulled it up on my phone, so I'm, I can manage that way too.
Okay, I think we're all got it, it should be out of the way. Again, public hearing for Westside Woods Major Phase Subdivision, preliminary plat. Subject for tonight is, again, is a consideration of the major phase subdivision and preliminary plat for, for Westside Woods, creating 100 lots and street rights away from approximately 58.85 acres, and to adopt the findings of fact, excuse me, apologize, and the conditions contained therein for the property legally described in the findings of fact. Again, that should read draft findings of fact. This project consists again of 100 lots on 58.85 acres. There is a total of 172 proposed units, 92 single-dwelling units, 80 multi-dwelling, multi-unit dwelling units, all within four phases. Phase one will consist of 28 single-dwelling units, two multiple-dwelling unit lots, and two open-space lots. It is anticipated this will be completed and final-platted in December of 2023. Phase two will consist of 10 single-dwelling unit lots, one multiple, multiple, multiple dwelling unit lots, and one open-space lot. This is anticipated to be completed and final-platted in December of 2025. Phase three will consist of 43 single-dwelling unit lots and one open-space lot. This is anticipated to be completed in December of 2027. And then finally, phase four will consist of 11 single-dwelling unit lots and one multiple dwelling unit lot, completed and final-platted anticipation December of 2029. There are two actions that will take place simultaneous with, with this one when it comes to the city commission, that's annexation of preliminary plat. Tonight, again, you, you will be considering a preliminary plat, and just for background, first pass of the pre-zone already went through commission, it is now in a tabled state, so at some point in the future they will have to bring that off the table and take action on the pre-zone request. As an overview, this is a copy of the preliminary plat with the, the phases indicated, phase one being red, phase two being green, phase three being yellow, and the final phase four being in blue. April, Lois has a, has a question.
Yeah, Lois, do you want to ask your question?
I would just ask Director Brink, as you go through, for those of us who are hearing this for the second time, would you highlight the changes from the first application?
I will do the best that I can, but to be honest with you, I would rather not, because this application needs to stand on its own and not be considered or compared to the previous one, if that makes sense. I don't, so if you don't mind, I'm just gonna, this will be a, just consider it a new project.
Okay.
But knowing, and realizing board members have heard this before, but this is a brand-new request, I really don't want to compare the two.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Again, that's the overall preliminary plat. Parkland dedication, this is subject to parkland dedication requirements per MCA. The proposal is to dedicate 13.410 acres of property to the city for parkland dedication, and this will be in phases one, two, and three. The project, based on 96 residential lots and their, their overall coverage, comes out to 2.79 acres is the, the required dedication. The applicant and developer is proposing 10.62 acres above the required minimum, and you see that on the attached presentation highlighted in green. Oops, wrong direction. And that's just overall site plan overlaid on the aerial showing it's location within the community, and I apologize if it's not.
Can folks online here, if you just yelled though?
Lois, if I speak you up, can you not? You cannot.
No.
Now I can't see my screen. Can those online hear me now?
Yes.
Fantastic. So we're gonna improvise even further, and I'm gonna look across the podium or the table and do my presentation. April, go to the next one if you don't mind. So this is an overlay of the project in relation to the city zoning map. You'll see that adjacent zoning is, is R2 and R3. Again, the, the, the pre-zone for this, this property did have it split into R3, R2 and R3 zoning categories. Okay, thanks, April. Land use category, the city's future land use map, located within the growth policy 2019, shows this as urban, and it is within the urban services boundary. Again, there's, there's two items up for discussion when this comes for the city commission. Again, you guys are, are here to hear the preliminary plat major, of a major phase subdivision. Again, this allows greater flexibility for applicants by lengthening the development timeline, realizing that each phase must stand on its own, they're preliminary plated together and shown as on a phasing schedule, and it's gonna be plated separately, then each phase is reviewed according to that phasing schedule, and then upon written notice for commencement for each additional phase. Again, there was a pre-app meeting, and again, this was back in the late summer, if I'm not mistaken. The initial supplemental was made, and I'll have the dates in a later screen. Completionist review, a sufficiency review, and a general review of the, or the steps in the, the review process. The Parks Board, they made a recommendation, or they, they did make a recommendation to the city commission, and I'll get to that in a later screen. We are here tonight, the planning board, you will make a recommendation to the city commission on the preliminary plat, any conditions and any exceptions that, that may be within that are shown on the preliminary plat. The city commission will hear it, they'll approve it, approve it conditionally or deny the preliminary plat application, and then they'll be able, the applicant will be able to get final plat approval after conditions have been met or completed as part of the preliminary plat. So staff recommends conditional approval, again, I like to give recommendations early in the, the presentation, you'll see that in the staff report as well, kind of sets the table for what you're reviewing. Staff recommends conditional approval of the preliminary plat for Westside Woods Major Phase Subdivision, creating 100 lots and street rights away from approximately 58.85 acres, and to adopt the draft findings of fact, recommend, recommend the draft findings of fact, fact, and the conditions contained therein for the property legal described in the findings of fact. Again, I want to preface that, that please review the staff report and those draft findings for detailed information, this is just meant to be an overview presentation, of course. The application date, application was made on September 16th. Staff deemed that application complete on December the 27th. The application was deemed sufficient by city staff on December the 19th, and the, the applicant and owner of this project is Sussex Development. Legal description, it is the southwest quarter, of the southwest quarter of Section 23, Township 10 North, Range 4 West, PMM, Lewis and Clark County, Montana, and it's together with attractive land being Portion A, located in Block 307 of the Bellevue Edition as shown on the amended plat filed under document number 3310725, accepting the COS that was filed under document 462306T, and deed of a highway right-ofway recorded in book 241 of deeds, page, page 177, and blocks 4, 5, and 6, and 9 of the Highland Park subdivision in Section 26, Township 10 North, Range 4 West, PMM, and Lewis and Clark County, Montana, as shown on the retracement filed under document 3339312. Generally, this is located approximately 600 feet west of the intersection of Granite Avenue and Howser Boulevard, again, in Lewis and Clark County, Montana. The present land use is vacant. Adjacent land uses to the north, east, and west are residential, to the south is city of Helena, open space. Adjacent zoning north is R2 and R3 residential, to the east is urban residential mixed-use in Upper West Side Number Nine. Again, as I mentioned in the presentation for Mountain View Meadows, this, the county has changed their zoning category and designations, however, we started this process before that, so we continued it through the report, and we'll continue it through the presentations that we've made until final approval is done. South, it's urban residential mixed-use, rural, excuse me, rural residential mixed-use, and to the west, it's urban residential mixed-use. Current zoning, it's pre-zoned R2 and R3, which again is, is completed, first pass at city commission, final pass is on, is in a tabled state with city commission, and it's currently urban residential mixed-use in the county. The site again is 58.85 acres, growth policy, land use designation again is, is urban, and it is in the urban services boundary. Public comment, this has changed. To date, which I, when I drafted this presentation was Friday, staff had received approximately 73 individual public comments, today it's over 100. The percentages for and against are relatively the same. Legal notices have been submitted and ran into, in the IR. We did post a public notice sign, certified letters went to adjacent and nearby property owners within 300 feet, which is above and beyond our traditional internal policy of 150 feet, and again, to the applicant, approximately 121 certified letters were sent out, and this project has been continually listed on the Community Development Current Projects webpage. Again, to be consistent with the presentation, you are to consider several findings of fact. Six listed at MCA, 7636083A, impacts to agriculture, impacts to agricultural water user facilities, impacts to local services. Impacts to agriculture, impacts to agricultural water user facilities, impacts to local services, impacts to the natural environment, impacts to wildlife and wildlife habitat, and impacts to public health and safety. MCA seventy-six three six oh eight three B specifies we have to ensure compliance with survey requirements, for compliance with city subdivision regulations, and compliance with local review procedures. Two additional sections of MCA requires us to look at compliance with, with easement provisions and make sure every lot has legal and physical access. Okay. The first finding, as dictated by MCA, this property is located, impacts to agriculture, excuse me, property is located adjacent to city limits and residential uses. The site is currently vacant and is not considered as or located near prime farmland. Less than one percent of the site contains soil suitable for agriculture. Grade and soil constraints limiting true farming operations on site. This proposed major phase subdivision will not impact agriculture. Impacts to agricultural water user facilities, no agricultural users or water facilities are adjacent to or in the immediate vicinity of this development. This project will be served by the City of Helena for water and sewer. This proposed major phase subdivision, again, the staff conclusion, will not impact water user facilities, agricultural water user facility, excuse me. Impacts to local services, this development, again, is proposed to be annexed into City of Helena, excuse me, and will, and will utilize all available city services, including transportation, water and wastewater, police and fire protection, solid waste, and parks and open lands. Transportation, the applicant did provide ATIS as required, which, in which their study indicated approximately one thousand four hundred and seven daily trips generated at full buildout. Impacts are anticipated off-site, and the applicant is proposing mitigation measures. All transportation infrastructure will comply with the city's complete streets policy. Mitigations have been included in the proposed conditions for both motorized and non-motorized travel. Development does provide four access points from the development where city code requires two. An exception to the city's block length standards is being requested, as well as an exception to the city's cul-de-sac requirements. Staff anticipates the need to continually monitor traffic impacts as each new phase is developed and built out of the existing phases continues. There's a deep, there's need for additional level of service and crash data as these new phases come online. Non-motorized facilities will be provided such as boulevards, boulevards sidewalks. Stormwater, there are two proposed existing stormwater ponds, and these will utilize existing city, city outflow easements. Water and wastewater, water and wastewater services will be provided by the City of Helena in all phases at two connection points. There is adequate water pressure and fire flow. Staff anticipates the need to fully review water service for each phase relative to storage capacity, and these updated design reports would be needed at each phase of development. Sanitary sewer collection system has adequate capacity, but there's a need for collaborative analysis needed at each phase just to ensure that there is adequate capacity as each phase is brought online. Other services, police and fire protection will be provided by the city. The impact, their impacts on current response times due to increased distances, solid waste services provided by the city for each additional lot, and then Helena City School District, they anticipated no impact to existing facilities. And the, there is some school safety mitigation measures proposed around Kessler School regarding the school itself and some non-motorized travel to and from the school. Parks, there was a dedication requirement per MCA and Helena city code. Again, based on lot coverage, there are two point nine seven acres dedication is required. The applicant is proposing thirteen point four one oh acres, again, proposed, and these will be dedicated in phases one, two, and three. The parks board recommended the proposal be accepted by the city commission with the condition that noxious weeds and forced fuels mitigation take place prior to acceptance by the city, or conveyance to the city, rather. The parks board met on February first and made their recommendation. Impacts to local services, our conclusion, staff conclusion, impacts to local services have been identified to emergency service call time, and call time, increased demand on city services such as water and wastewater, impacts to existing stormwater runoff, increase in traffic generated from the proposed development, and impacts to the non-motorized transportation network surrounding the development. We feel these impacts can be mitigated with applicants' proffered conditions, proposed mitigating improvements, and supplemented with the approved, the approval conditions recommended by city staff. The next finding, impacts to the natural environment, there are no geologic or natural hazards identified on the site. There is one intermittent seasonal drainage area that has been identified by the applicant. Potential impact to plant species of concern, of course, due to proximity to Mount Helena City Park. Soil disturbance could increase the potential for noxious weed introduction, but there is no impact, identified impact to groundwater. Staff conclusion, this proposed major subdivision will impact the natural environment, but those conditions can be mitigated as conditions, mitigated with conditions as recommended by city staff. Allow me a couple seconds to take a, take a drink. Impacts to wildlife and wildlife habitat, there have been no identified wildlife, identified wildlife areas or areas suitable for wildlife habitat on site. There, there are seasonal drainage areas that can serve as refuge for wildlife, and these areas will be located in dedicated parkland. Urban development is not intended to meet the habitat needs for larger wildlife, and again, like previous projects, urban development typically can reduce development pressures in more rural areas which are better suited for wildlife habitat. Conclusion, there will not be significant impacts associated with this development to wildlife or wildlife habitat. Impacts to public health and safety, it is located in a moderate, moderate wild line, wild land fire risk area. Proper building techniques and fuel mitigation can reduce this risk. This development is proposed to be annexed into the city and provide a city water service designed to provide adequate fire flows. Development will be served by Helena Police Department and Fire Departments. Street and other infrastructure will be built to, to city standards. In conclusion, staff concludes this development creates impacts on public health and safety. These impacts will be mitigated with the completion of the proposal adhering to city code and as supplemented with conditions as recommended by city staff. Finally, the last requirements of MCA, verifying compliance with survey requirements. Staff concludes that survey requirements will be reviewed for completeness upon submission of final plat for approval, and a copy is gonna be retained in our files, and we'll verify at that point that the final plat does conform with survey requirements. Compliance for subdivision regulations, regulations, zoning compliance relative to setback lot coverage, parking and landscaping, and signage, there are two exceptions, block length and dead-end streets request, and I'll get to those in section seven discussion. Excuse me, I shouldn't have taken a swig of, touched that thing. Staff concludes the applicant has provided sound justifications for both block length and dead-end street exceptions, and these justifications are adequate and sufficient for the governing body to make decisions on those exceptions. Concluding, local subdivision review procedures, the subdivision review and approval process is consistent with the requirements of the Montana subdivision and Plating Act, Plating Act, and Helena city code. Provision of easements, staff concludes the proposed division, subdivision complies with the provision of easements within the proposed subdivision for the location and installation of any clean utilities or infrastructure improvements. Legal physical access, internal streets will provide legal and physical access to each lot proposed. Names of all the internal streets have been reserved and approved by the county addressing coordinator. Conclusion, the proposed development provides legal and physical access to all the proposed subdivision lots. Post preliminary plat approval, the applicant can enjoy final plat approval when the property is developed in accordance with preliminary plat, and conditions of each phase has been satisfied. When public improvement plans are complete and in compliance with city standards, and all improvements have been installed, completed, or properly bonded. Conclusion, there is no indication that the proposed development would not follow the city's post preliminary plat process. Again, this is a brief analysis from a growth policy standpoint. Won't really read that, those bullet points, but I'll just highlight that two thousand nineteen growth policy identifies the area as urban, and identifies the area of the urban service boundary as being the best suited type, best suited for this type of development. Again, some bullet points, just to highlight some of the, where staff feels goals and objectives of the growth policy are being met with this, this application, this proposal. Section seven, for reference in the, in the staff report regarding subdivision regulations, again, this, this applicant is not requesting any variances from the City of Helena subdivision regulations. All design standards of the city relative to all those regulations will be met and followed without the need for variances from the city commission. There are two exceptions this time from city code that are being requested, and I say this time in reference to the, the previous case we heard just a little while ago. The first one is block lengths, again, to, to reference the section out of the HCC. Blocks may not exceed six hundred feet in length except when a larger length is needed to meet grade limitations, the existing built environment, water bodies, railroad crossings, or industrial uses. The applicant is requesting an exception from the city's block length requirements and has indicated their requested exception allowance, included their requested allowance into the design for the development and have incorporated the design exception on the preliminary plat that, that is before you. Again, block, blocks shall not exceed the six hundred feet length requirement except the lengths are necessary due to top, topographic constraints of the site. There are three blocks that exceed the six hundred foot block length requirement, and this exception applies to those proposed roads due to topographic constraints to meet grade limitations of the proposed roads. Those roads being Livingston Avenue from Howser to Lee Drive, that block length is approximately six hundred eighty-nine point nine nine feet. That one does have a mid-block pedestrian crossing. Lee Drive from Livingston Avenue to Breakman Avenue, that block length is approximately six hundred thirty-one point six six feet, and there is no mid-block pedestrian crossing on that one. Breakman from Park Drive to Lee Drive, Breakman Court, that block length exceeds nine hundred seventy-one feet, and that one does have a block length pedestrian crossing, mid, excuse me, a mid-block pedestrian crossing. Staff concurs that the explanations given and exhibits included in the preliminary plat application in support of the use of block lengths longer than six hundred feet in this development are adequate and sufficient for the governing body to make a decision on that exception. Again, the applicant has provided sufficient, information sufficient to justify the exceptions to the block length standards that are outlined in HCC twelve four two C. The second exception relative to dead-end streets, dead-end streets, and I'll read this verbatim out of city code, dead-end streets are allowed only when the applicant can demonstrate a dead-end street as necessary, due to compelling, compelling circumstances such as enhancement of safety, compliance with city's complete street resolution, topography constraints, mitigation of disturbance of existing water courses, mitigation of access obstructions, or temporary dead-end street included for future extension. Dead-end streets may not exceed six hundred feet in total length. Dead-end streets longer than one hundred and fifty feet must have an emergency turnaround designated and installed according to the standards and requirements of the city. The applicant has indicated that there are compelling circumstances that exist for the proposed development, for the use of dead-end streets, and has also integrated the dead-end street design into the subdivision design. All dead-end streets are less than six hundred feet in length. This is a breakdown of the, those lengths that are, that are provided. Crowley Court, three hundred thirty-two feet. Lee Court, two hundred sixty-one feet. Livingston Court, five hundred thirty-eight. Breakman Court at one hundred fifteen point seven three feet, and Flowery Court at five hundred thirty-eight feet. Connectivity of internal roads within the development was utilized as much as possible, but due to the extreme top, topographic hardships experienced at this location, utilizing dead-end streets to provide safe access to residents and to meet City of Helena engineering standards and fire codes was necessary. And that's verbatim, that's the, the applicant's explanation. Staff concurs that the above explanations are both included in this report, as well as in more detail in the staff report, and all exhibits included in the preliminary plat application, and support of the use of dead-end streets in this development are adequate and sufficient for the governing body to make a decision on the exception. The applicant has provided information sufficient to justify the exceptions to the dead-end prohibitions outlined in HCC twelve two, twelve four two E. April must be getting tired of doing, she's doing the microphone for me now, okay. Staff recommends conditional approval of the preliminary plat for the West Side, to conclude, this is staff recommendation again, staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat for the Westside West's major phase subdivision created, one, creating one hundred lots, and street rights away from approximately fifty-eight point eight five acres, and to adopt the findings, draft findings of fact, and the conditions contained therein for the property legally described in the findings of fact. The following conditions shall apply to the preliminary plat approval and must be satisfied before the final plat may be, may be approved. So there are many recommended conditions, and for the record, I'm going to read each one of them if you so indulge me, and so I don't have to look at the small text, I'm going to pull it up in my own copy of the staff report, so bear with me while I pull that.
Is it sufficient if we take notice of them, that they're in the staff report? Or do, I mean, I'm trying to save you reading the twenty-one conditions of approval. If you really did in your record, that's fine.
If you don't mind, let me read them into the record, and that way you can handle them on your end as you see fit, but I'd prefer to read them at the record if that's okay, Mr. Chairman. Condition one, developer must submit an update to their traffic impact study, including signal warrant analysis during the development and build-out of each project phase. New counts must be conducted during midweek while school is in session. Recommended condition number two, based on an updated traffic impact study and signal warrant analysis for each phase, if a signal, traffic signal, or other off-site improvements are required, developer must coordinate with MDT to review the installation of a traffic signal at the Granite Avenue and Highway twelve intersection, as well as any other off-site improvements. If MDT agrees with the off-site improvements or installation of a signal at this intersection, the developer shall proportionally share in the install or provide a bond in an amount equal to or proportionate, to a proportionate share for a signal at this intersection or other off-site improvements. All new road section asphalt widths must be, condition number three, all new road section asphalt widths must comply with City of Helena engineering standards. Proposed condition, recommended condition number four, developer must revise the TIS to clear, to clarify types of vehicle crashes, and if any serious injury or fatality crash occurred, describe any, describe any safety mitigation strategies. Recommended condition number five, with phase one of project development, the entire length of Howser Boulevard from Granite Avenue to the overlooked, overlooked subdivision must be constructed to local road standards, including curb, gutter, and boulevard sidewalks. With phase one of project development, the applicant must construct curb, gutter, and boulevard sidewalks to major collector standards on Granite Avenue from Howser Boulevard to Knight Street. With phase one of project development, the applicant shall coordinate with the city to install traffic calming mitigation measures, measures at the intersection of Howser Boulevard and Granite Avenue, such as a compact roundabout. With phase one of project development, the applicant, in collaboration with Kessler School and the Helena School District staff, must install a pedestrian actuated flash, flashing crosswalk sign at the current crosswalk at the Overland Boulevard, Overlook Boulevard and Granite Avenue intersection, as well as a street light to provide for better pedestrian safety at this location. Recommended condition number nine, with phase one of project development, the applicant must install bow belt. With phase one of project development, the applicant must install ball belt, ball belts on the south, south end of the Kessler School property. At the east leg of Knight Street and Granite Avenue intersection as well as a flash, flashing electronic speed limit sign south of this intersection. In an, in an effort to slow traffic speeds through the school area. Recommended, recommended condition number 10. With phase three of project development, Park Drive from Woodward Avenue to Hauser Boulevard must be constructed to local road standards. Including curb, gutter, and boulevard sidewalks. With phase fee, phase three of project development. Park Drive and Woodward Avenue must be connected in the intersection constructed to city engineering standards for complete streets. Staff recommended condition number 12. The existing City of Helena 24-inch diameter still water main crossing to propose subdivision. Known as the crosstown connector must be kept at its current burial configuration. With allowed vertical adjustments and kept so that it is no shallower than 6.5 feet below ground surface. And no date deeper than 7.5 feet below ground surface. Or as coordinated with the city and its current alignment must be, and its current alignment must be maintained. Except for perpendicular crossings, no additional utility shall be placed within the crosstown connector transmission mains existing easement. Recommended condition number 13. A plan for noxious invasive, invasive species control on any land dedicated as city parkland. And all open space lots will be submitted and approved by the city and implemented prior to final plating. A fuels mitigation plan, recommended condition number 14. Fills mitigation plan must be submitted and approved by the city and implemented on all parkland dedications and open space lots prior to final plating. Prior to final plat approval, any new storm drainage facilities must be within an easement granted to the city that allows for access and maintenance and restricts any encroachments. Staff recommended condition number 16. Updated flow meter data and downstream sewer capacity calculations shall be prepared and submitted to the city for each development phase. Now, accordance with city standards, if updated flow meter data and capacity calculations require upgrades. All sewer mains that are at or exceed 75% capacity will have to be upsized by the developer. Staff recommended condition number 17. The project developer must provide the city a water system design report that fully evaluates and analyzes. The available storage and any additional storage required for the proposed phases of the development. Due to its size and potential impacts on the water distribution system. This report must be provided prior to infrastructure review for the final phase of development. Excuse me, the initial phase of development. If the submitted was, water system design report indicates the need for additional storage. Said storage must be available prior to final plat approval of the phase. Which triggered the additional storage requirement and prior to final plat approval of each subsequent phase of the development. Recommended condition number 18. Improvements listed in the TIS to be completed in phase one must be completed prior to phase one, prior to the final plat of phase one. Recommended condition number 19, improvements listed in the TIS to be completed in phase two must be completed prior to final plat of phase two. Improvements listed in the traffic impact study to be completed in phase three must be completed prior to final plat of phase three. And finally, staff recommended, recommended condition number 21. Improvements listed in the traffic impact study to complete, to be completed in phase four must be completed prior to final plat of phase four. That concludes my marathon reading of the proposed recommended staff conditions for this item. Again, city staff is available to take questions if the board has any for us.
All right, thank you. I have a couple of questions from Ms. Doctor about the standards of review, particularly on the exceptions. Just starting with street length. Is there a sta, I mean, so except when the longer length is needed, is need the standard that we're supposed to apply? In determining whether, and do we have a definition of a need?
Chair O'Connor, thank you, no, there is no definition provided in code. What you see in the report is the extent of the language that's provided in the exceptions. And as you know, in contrast to a variance where there are, there is a standard. The standard is wholly found in the exceptions in the code itself. So, your point about need not being descri, need not being defined. You've got what you need bef, what you need to make a decision before you write in the code. And that's, that's what you'll, that's what you have.
And as I recall, the variance requirements are that it needs to be essentially something not self-inflicted. Is that true here as well, or is that distinct between variance and exception?
Chair O'Connor, that is distinct. And that is solely to be considered with a variance request and not with an exception.
Okay, and so then similarly for the dead-end standard, so necessary due to compelling circumstances. And it's, gives us a few examples, but that's the complete definition of all of those terms such as they are.
Chair O'Connor, yes.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions for staff?
Good evening, and thank you so much for hearing us. My name is Becca Cantrell, and I am one of the partners of Sussex Construction. And I wanted to take a minute to just let you know who we are. Ron Barch and myself started Sussex Construction 27 years ago in Helena, Montana. We've made our home here for the last 27 years. We've been involved in the local parade of homes and home shows for over 20 years here. We've built many custom homes, condominiums, curated homes. We've built commercial buildings. We've done infill and some civic work as well. Some of our larger projects have been Sussex Park, Heron Creek. And some of our other smaller ones have been Stony Brook condos, some infills on University Street. We have been members for the, of the HBIA, the NBAA, and the MBIA for the last 20 odd years. Ron has been a leader in those and has served on the state building code board. And has been nominated for that the last, or several, for about three governors. He is also a green bill professional. We're a local company. We employ about 50 people depending on the season. We've built over 400 homes in this area. We've been 27 years in business in this area. And we're a major supporter of our community. Here's an example of just some of the things we've done over those years with our local community. A variety of different things from hay mazes to moving old buildings to supporting sports groups and local outdoor pursuits, the arts, et cetera. This is Sussex Park, and it is adjacent to our, provide our proposed West Side Woods. It's a, just above Woodward, it's Sussex Court and May Rowan Court. You can see here it has two cul-de-sacs. And it, we also installed two trails that attach to the La Grande Canyon Trail. This is Ridgeview Condominiums, and this is a condominium development that's up behind the hospital on a hill. And it had about 34 condos in it. This is an example of Heron Creek, which is a subdivision that we're working on right now. It's about 60% complete. It's 130 acres, has 109 units in it. It is mixed density to allow for multi-generational, multi-social economical income community. It includes trails, 35 acres of open space, ponds, and a playground, and it is a booming success. And here are some of the condos that we've built at Stony Brook Village, and that's in Montana City. It's a 55-plus retirement community. My mom-in-law actually lives there too. And we're, we're helping to finish that community with its build-out. And now I'd like to introduce you to Derek Davis, our operations manager.
Okay, thank you, Chair and Board members for having us. And also, thank you to WWC Engineering, the City of Helena. And for your guys' time tonight, we do know that a lot of people have spent a lot of time on this project. So, as you guys are aware, Montana, City of Helena, we're in a housing crisis right now. There's a few reports that reference this. One of those is the Tri-County Housing Needs Assessment. And the Helena Valley. So, the Helena Valley planning area is also in a sort of crisis. The, the city-county Consolidated Planning Board submitted their latest growth, growth policy a few years ago. And it lists five constraints that are inhibiting development in the county. So, one of those is water availability. A lot of subdivisions that have been developed in the county are draining the aquifers, they're impacting groundwater. Another is wastewater management. So, a lot of these communities also have community wastewater systems. They require a lot of maintenance and some of them fail. They're also contributing to groundwater contamination, soil contamination. Another constraint to developing in the county is roads. There's a lot of roads in the county, which means a lot of maintenance and a lot of roads that aren't up to complete street standards. There's also fire protection issues in the county. A lot of these same neighborhoods that experience water shortages don't have enough water to supply their fire suppression systems. And then flooding, there has been development in the past in the flood plain. So, to reiterate what Chris said, this is the map from the growth plan. The brown line's the urban standards boundary. The orange is, is the area designated as urban development. So, the green arrow there is West Side Woods. As you can see, we're within that same urban standards boundary. So, just a, a bunch of reasons why the Helena area needs housing. Why we need workforce housing, why we need safe infrastructure. And why the growth plan was developed. The growth plan really, you know, it struggled in the past 20 years of how do we grow? So, it says, yeah, grow dense, grow dense in the urban standards boundary. And let's try to incentivize developers to grow there, let's have flexible standards. But please, let's stop the urban sprawl. Let's stop these unsustainable developments in the county. Let's do everything we can really to follow this plan. So, our proposal, it aligns with the growth plan. It aligns with the city growth policy. It aligns with the SEDS report from the Tri-County Economic Strategy. It aligns with city code, it aligns with subdivision, subdivision regulations and the, the housing needs assessment. And your city staff, this is the second time vetting it, this is the second time city staff's recommended approval. So, where is it? This is kind of a different view, obviously, looking south. So, we've got Kessler School right here, Highway 12, and here's West Side Woods. Obviously, City of Helena Park to the south.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I apologize for interrupting. It doesn't appear our slides are updating. On my screen, we still have Helena Valley planning area crisis and some text. But it'd be nice to be able to see what the presenter is discussing.
All right, thanks, April's working on it.
Do you see the current slide?
Yes, thank.
Okay, it should be working from now, and you can use this mic if you want to, Derek.
Yeah, I'll take the pros. Thank you. So, yeah, City of Helena Park to the south, in the dark green on this map, if you can see it, that's all proposed parkland. 13.4 acres, as Chris said. Within walking distance of Kessler School, Kessler School Park, Spree Meadows across Highway 12, 10 Mile Creek Park, and Montana Wild. Lots of breweries in Helena. So, talking about responsible development, what does that mean? So, you know, in our perspective, this project aligns with the city and county growth policy. Which has, you know, it's been developed over a lot of years to get where it is right now. Annexation protects the Helena Valley planning area. It respects the topography of the land, or the design does. It's considerate of adjacent neighborhood densities. And, you know, with our proposal as condition, with the conditions of approval. It enhances the adjacent county neighborhood. It provides complete streets on all the impacted roads west of Kessler School, including Granite Avenue. So, safe neighborhoods, these will be city standards. So, by nature, they'll have boulevard sidewalks, fire hydrants, city and sewer water, city sewer and water. Community trails and parks, Becca touched on this a little bit, but this is kind of a staple of Sussex development. And they have had a lot of successful developments in the area. But everything seems to have a trail in it. So, this was no exception, and in parkland as well. As Chris mentioned, there will be noxious weed mitigation and fire mitigation. We've also worked a lot with the community, we've been part of these community walks, the MTAC walk. We met with the school district, Kessler School staff, this staff as well as, you know, the former staff of the school district, the former staff of Kessler School. We've had a lot of meetings with them, just, you know, trying to. Stand up here. We've had a lot of discussions with the school district and the school staff. Can you guys hear me online all right?
It's, it's very faint.
Can you guys hear me? So, sorry, back to the school district. We've had a lot of discussions and basically asked what they wanted to see for improvements. They did write a letter to city staff. And their recommendations are incorporated into the conditions. And Sussex had several meetings again to develop those conditions. And sustainable growth, so again, it meets the growth policy, the city standards, subdivision regulations, reduction of urban sprawl. No wells which drain the aquifers or septic systems. A lot of big questions have been asked about why this design. So, when we look at subdivisions, you know, the last subdivision to my knowledge, and feel free to jump in here. But the last subdivision developed on a hillside was probably Nob Hill. And, you know, standards were similar, the block length standards were a little different. But there's a few things that really, you know, city standards dictate what you can do. that really, you know, city standards dictate what you can do. So, one of them is whenever you have an intersection, there's a four percent grade requirement around that intersection, um, so basically flat. Um, another one is ten percent road grades. You cannot request a variance for anything over ten percent. So, if you have a hill or a hillside or a road, um, that follows parallel to a hillside, um, you can't put a four percent intersection on that hillside. Um, another one is the turn radius. So, as you see here, our turn radius is, um, they meet the city standard, but you can't go tighter than that. So, um, you can't switch back up a mountain. But these codes, these standards, they're in place for a reason. They're in place to protect public health and safety, um, and we've designed around that. And, and the subdivision meets those standards, um, as well as city code. Um, again, we already touched on consideration for existing land. This is a Google Earth view, um, but, you know, Flowery Street, i- it goes alongside the city park in that hillside, Breakman. Uh, it follows, there's a natural, a natural hill in the middle of the subdivision. It follows that. Again, these are both restricted. You can't add an intersection there at a four percent. Um, the existing topography's steeper than that. Um, and then I'll touch also on these, these cul-de-sacs. So, um, this cul-de-sac right here, um, if you guys have gone out to the property or looked at it, I'm sure you noticed there's kind of two natural bluffs out there. Um, so this specific area and this, this area here are natural bluffs on the property. Um, this is a bluff up here, and then there's a steep drop-off that's more than ten percent, um, that goes down the hill. And then on Crowley Court here, there is a mountain, uh, behind Crowley Court that restricts the road from going through. So, on the open space here, you'll notice, um, it's a little easier on another slide, but you'll notice the trails that go through here. The trails are in orange, so we've got a trail bisecting all of the longer blocks, um, to provide for pedestrian connectivity. There's one here, there's one here. There's also trails at the end of the cul-de-sacs to allow for pedestrian connectivity. Lois, did you have a question?
Yes, I did. Uh, could I ask the speaker to go back to the last slide?
This one?
I, I might have missed this, and if I did, I'm sorry. The two farthest north cul-de-sacs, why can't they be joined? You talked about where there's natural bluffs and mountains, but the two farthest cul-de-sacs. Um, and I can't read them, I'm sorry. Yeah, you're getting close.
Okay, so, um, right here, um...
Yes.
There is a natural bluff where this lighter green area is.
Right.
To the west of here, there's also a cliff, um, and there's private property, um, to the west of here.
What I'm talking about are the two cul-de-sacs that are so close together. There's one lot between them. Why can't they be joined? And would that alleviate some of the concerns? Yeah, right across there, you've got lots, there, those two.
Yep. So, this, um, in working with the city, this was actually part of our original proposal. Our, our street gate grades did not meet city standards. Um, this is more than ten percent, uh, going from this road to this road, um, and wouldn't allow for the four percent intersection grade coming off, and then another ten percent to connect.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so, uh, there is a benefit, and the growth plan talks about this also, uh, benefit of annexation. Um, it's a powerful tool that the city can use, um, in this case, you know, to extend city services to the property, to improve adjacent properties that don't currently meet city standards, um, to really improve infrastructure in areas, uh, around where you're looking to annex. So, a benefit, obviously, of annexation is we won't be putting straws into the ground, and we won't be contaminating the soil. There's stricter codes, stricter regulations in the city. Um, you know, there's, the block lengths are a lot smaller in the city, the dead-end roads, the cul-de-sacs are a lot smaller in the city, and there're stricter standards. Um, there's also sidewalks, boulevard sidewalks, and it will generate a lot of, a lot of tax money and contribute to the tax base. Uh, it'll, this proposal in particular will add about thirteen and a half acres of open space that connects to the city park. Um, there's already trails in place. A lot of people use these trails. Um, a lot of people walk on this property. Um, so, you know, as Ron and Becca do, with every, every subdivision, they're looking to extend those trails into this development. And the fact that, um, the, the Parks Board recommended approval of the thirteen and a half acres, you know, if, if this board and the city commission does the same, then that will all be public land. There's about a hu- a mile and a half of trails proposed on the project, and part of that tax base will also go to, to the open spaces and the schools. So, zoning, as Chris mentioned, um, this, this property is pre-zoned, R2 and R3. So, the darker green areas are R2, the lighter green areas are R3. This is kind of a zoomed-in view, um, of the original plat, the area east of, of West Side Woods. So, these are all very small lots, um, fifty-foot lots, and as you can see, there's, you know, there's residences that cover multiple, multiple lots. This is an area designated in the growth plan, um, for infill development in the future. And with how many lots there are, I would expect, you know, that this area does get denser, um, as people sell their properties or, or invest. So, traffic, we completed a new TIS, um, this fall, midweek, when the school was in session. It's been reviewed by the City of Helena, the City of Helena's third-party, uh, traffic professional out of Washington, and WWC Engineering. The conditions of approval, um, provided by city staff, take into account the new, newest TIS. Um, each phase of the subdivision will require further, uh, TIS and accident reviews. The traffic calming devices, uh, I'll show you on another slide, but the traffic calming devices are based on some of the traffic impacts that this project, um, does bring forward. And there will be a traffic light installed on US twelve, um, if future traffic analysis dictate. Again, um, basically, all the roads with this proposal, west of Kessler School that are impacted, right now they're county roads. Right now, some of them are gravel, some of them are paved. In the future, they will be boulevard sidewalks. Um, right now, kids walk to school on the roads. People speed down Granite Avenue, past the school. There's going to be a roundabout at Hauser, um, Hauser and Granite to slow them down, as well as additional traffic calming devices around the school. So, this, when we submitted the, the proposal, um, we knew that staff was going to review this proposal and recommend conditions, um, similar to the last time around. We have a few more this time. Um, so, when we submitted the, the application, we submitted what was required by code. So, that is, in the blue area on this map was complete streets, so with sidewalks, curb and gutter, and the green was pavement only. So, this is a visual, I guess, of all the, all the improvements per the conditions. So, as you can see, all of the blue here, those will be complete streets with sidewalks, uh, curb gutter, boulevard sidewalks, um, as well as a, uh, roundabout at the corner of Granite and Hauser, a flashing speed sign up above Kessler School, so as cars come down, down Granite, which is quite steep, um, they'll have that flashing speed sign, uh, pedestrian actuated flashing crosswalk signs, bulb bouts to constrict the traffic and slow them down, as well as a traffic light if warranted on, uh, Highway twelve and Granite. So, there's been a lot of discussion about, there's one way in, one way out of the subdivision. Obviously, I took this map and colored in all the roads out there. But as you can see on here, the red are the, the red lines are the four accesses to our subdivision, and then the blue are all the routes, um, that you would take if you wanted to get out of there somewhat quickly, the most direct routes. Um, so, you know, in addition to Granite Avenue here, you can also take Hauser out and go down Jocelyn, you can take Flowery down. Uh, there's a lot of routes to get in here within the web of the city. This is just a, a closer-up view of all the trails. Again, um, the open space is in dark green, the trails are in orange. So, so at the south end of the, the project, this trail connects to the base of La Gran, La Gran Cannon, um, as well as trails connecting to the end of the cul-de-sacs, mid-block crossings on all of the roads, um, other than the shorter cul-de-sacs, uh, connectivity within the subdivision. Uh, the dark green areas, those will all be fire mitigated. We have worked with, um, Fire Safe, Tri-County Fire Safe Working Group, um, and we do have a prescription. Um, there is some more detail in the conditions of approval that, that will dictate how we have to fire mitigate the area. We've been spraying the weeds since we got the property, so we're well, well en route to the noxious weed mitigation. Um, we, we've also named the roads in the subdivision after local artists, and we hope to, um, commission these artists to do art installations along the trails, which would be in the, in the open, the, the public space. So, Chris went through this, I'll be quick, but overall, city staff recommends approval of the West Side Woods major-phase subdivision as conditioned. Um, this project mitigates any impacts that, uh, that the project brings. Um, and there's been a lot of discussion on the growth plan, um, and per the city, city staff, this project meets the goals and objectives of the two thousand nineteen City of Helena growth policy. So, we've been asked a lot, what, uh, what are we doing for the community? Um, what can we do for the community? Um, you know, as, as Becca mentioned, we are a local company. There are a lot of regional and out-of-town developers putting in buildings up on, on Sanders Street, um, where there's not much sidewalk infrastructure, um, putting in quite a bit of housing there, a lot of housing in East Helena, um, which is all great, and it's all housing that we need. Um, but, you know, with Sussex, we are a local company. We have a history of being part of the community, um, bringing in local revenue, local taxes, and local housing. So, thank you very much, and, uh, we'd be glad to take any questions, but thank you for your time. All right, before we get into public comment, are there questions from anybody on the board?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions for Mr. Davis.
Yeah.
Uh, could you maybe go back to one of the slides with the map? I just want to kind of understand better some of the mitigation, uh, provisions that have, you've built into the plan. So, there's, it's, when I'm looking at the, uh, staff recommendation and then the conditions assigned to it, it's like, uh, condition number five, the Phase One project, you, uh, project development, the entire length of Hauser from Granite Avenue to overlook subdivision must, uh, the roads must be constructed to standard curb gutter. Number six is a similar requirement, uh, seven, eight, nine, those are all Phase One. Uh, Phase Three, there are some additional requirements for the local road standards. I, I don't know which, if you go back to the one that you had, the blue, that, uh, this one.
Yeah.
Is this all Phase One, or is this complete, like, one, two, three, finished?
This is everything, yeah.
This is everything, okay. Okay. And so today, so the boundary, today, for example, uh, the one on the lower, I can't read what street that is, uh, Flowery. So, today, that's just a county dirt road? Or it's not a road, that's up to the city standard?
Correct, yeah, it's a county dirt road.
Okay. And then the Granite Avenue, that is clearly off that your proposed subdivision, but part of this mitigation will be to improve that all the way down to highway, down to the highway?
Correct, yeah. Um, it's all the way from, from Flowery Street down to Kessler School. So, just to give you an idea, I've got my mouse. Right now, if you can see my mouse, um, the complete streets and, uh, basically, it overlooks Estates subdivision, so where my mouse is at the, at the far top right.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, we'd be installing complete streets, um, all the way from Flowery down to, to connect there.
Okay, then, one, Mr. Chairman, one more question. If you go to the next slide, I think might be the best one? Uh, the one after this one, I guess? Okay, it's, it's kind of a similar question to Ms. Steinbeck's. So, if I look at Lee Court, um, it, it can't, um, be extended down to the street below because of the bluff, it's too much of a, a grade, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, and WWC, Jeremy might know, but I, I believe it's about a forty-foot drop-off there.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, I guess one more question, uh, Mr. Chairman, for Mr. Davis. Back to Mrs. Steinbeck's, Ms. Steinbeck's question, where she was talking about Libsley and, uh, Breakman. That's, you said that's like a ten percent grade? Uh, so it'd be out, outside of the four percent intersection?
Yeah, if you connected a dot from the middle of one cul-de-sac to the road there, it, you couldn't get your ten percent, um, with your four percent intersection.
Okay, uh, just for a matter of, uh, discussion, Mr. Chairman, what would it take to do that? I mean, what, what would happen if you didn't meet that? Is, I mean, is it so steep that during a snowstorm or ice storm, cars would slide down the hill? Or what would it take to do that?
Yeah, if you don't mind, I'll let, I'll defer to WWC here.
Mr. Chairman, I don't mind.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, Planning Board members, Jeremy Fadness, WWC Engineering. Yeah, so we, our very first rendition of the subdivision, almost three years ago now, included connection of those streets. Um, the connection would have required four percent, over four percent grades at intersections that are right down there, and we had a twelve percent road grade. We were contemplating a variance from city standards. Uh, it's written right into the subdivision regulations, these grade requirements. They're not in the engineering standards, but they're in the subdivision regulation code requirements. But the way the code is written, it specifically says in the code, you cannot, the city commission cannot grant a variance for road grades. So, city code directly contributed to some of these cul-de-sacs. Now, we have worked with, we have talked with city staff. Um, they are contemplating, potentially trying to work through some of those code requirements to see if there's, uh, a way to change those code requirements to allow for some steeper grades in certain circumstances. We are willing, in the future, for future phases, you know, for Phase Two, which is, this would be Phase Two and Three, to connect those streets if code requirements change. Um, we just physically cannot do it right now based on the code requirements. Um, we would like to, honestly. Uh, we had a road from Flowery Court that went all the way down to Breakman. Um, it was, uh, it was a connector street through the condo, uh, the, the multi-family development lot that would have allowed for that access, but again, it would not meet city street requirements. Um, city code currently requires private streets even to meet city... City code currently requires private streets even to meet city grade requirements. And so those are some of the limitations we've been working through, but that's, that's the reason right now, at this point in time, we can't connect those streets.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sorry about the rehash for some people, but I'm new to this, so thank you.
Hopefully I answered your question.
Oh, you did, thank you.
Chairman?
Go ahead.
For Derek. Firstly, thank you for a really exceptional presentation. I, I know that this is a separate project, but I, I see a lot more information from the first time we reviewed this subdivision, so it's much appreciated. I heard it mentioned that Sussex was working with the local school district, and I've read through many, many hours of public comment and didn't see anything from the school district, so I'm wondering if you can tell me how those conversations went, and if there's any concern about the new housing development stressing the school's resources.
Yeah, so there were, I guess there were kind of two conversations over seven meetings or so, with two different sets of staff. So, the original staff that we met with, you know, the main concern was people speed down Granite Street, so what can we do to stop that? As well as, yes, obviously, we're going to bring a lot of traffic to the area, so how can we mitigate that? And the school district did send a letter in during the last application that reflected what, what improvements they needed to address those concerns. There was also conversation from the school district, to be quite frank, that we need kids in our schools. So this project obviously would contribute to some kids around, some kids to Kessler School. Kessler School, I think when we spoke with the school district, was like third on the list for an upgrade, an upgraded school. The newer, newer staff we met with, the school district did send a letter, and I believe that's in the findings of fact or the comments, Chris, from the school district, and they outlined what they were looking for, and basically said they welcome anything that enhances safety to the site. So we've incorporated those recommendations, those are in the conditions of approval for the subdivision. And, you know, like the neighbors, like us, everybody is concerned about the impacts to the area. And, you know, that's why we've had two sets of city staff review the project, we've gone with their recommendations for conditions, as well as any that the school has brought up, we've welcomed those. Thanks.
James?
Yeah, hi, James Sontek here. Reoccurring question, I guess, here, for block six and blocks five, you guys have those allocated for condos, correct? I believe that's the, where they would want to, Flowery Courts, between Flowery Court and Breakman Court, those pieces that don't have any houses currently allocated lots.
So, I'm sorry, I don't have the block numbers in front of me, but this area here...
Yep, and then to the northwest there, yeah.
Yep, correct.
How are those going to be accessed? I don't see any road development plans, or is it just going to be private drives, or...
So, we, we do have legal and physical access to the lots right now. The development of these lots do not happen in the subdivision review process, they happen during the permitting process, so when we go to build on those lots, we would submit plans for what we're looking to build, all of the city staff departments, the building department, they would review those, provide comments to ensure we're building to code, and we wouldn't be able to build until we have an approved permit set of plans.
And so those, those would still be confined to the city standards, right, the codes?
Correct, yep.
Okay. Thank you.
I guess to follow up on that, I mean, so the, the project overview says that there will be eighty condos, I, I assume relatively evenly split among those two or three spots there, I mean, so it's going to be, let's say, forty condos in that spot off of Flowery Court, with the only point of access being through Flowery Court, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Are there other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I, I have a question. It's a, a general question to the city, to the developer, to all those concerned. Is there any way to provide access over, from your development, over to what used to be the end of, the drive down from, I can't even think of his name right now.
Are you thinking of Park Lane?
No, I, I, I'm very honestly thinking of where the light is out by the corner bar.
Ah, or by Kohler. Looks like La Gran Canyon.
Yeah, La Gran Cannon. Is there any, you know, I heard that the state said they wouldn't allow any other connection to the highway.
Yep.
Well, there's a connection right there.
Correct, yep.
And, and what I'm asking is, I haven't heard anything about efforts by, combined efforts of the city and the developer, or anyone else, to make that a possibility. I do see a letter, our recommendation in here, that there was discussion from one of the people who own the property, that that would have to go through to allow an easement. So, can you, can you answer that question for me?
Yes, I'll, I'll pass it over to Ron here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. My name is Ron Barch, and I'm one of the partners in Sussex Development. Thank you for that question, because that's a very important question, and it's been the, it's been a lot of the public comment that I know that you've read. You know, there's a couple of things that are pretty important. First and foremost is that we're given the rules and the regulations of how you develop. Those are established through the federal, the state, and the local jurisdictions. Every project, our project, is required to have two access points to the project. So that's the first thing. We have four. So by statute, we meet the requirements for access.
That's not the question I asked.
No, I, I was going to further, if that's all right. One of the things that we, going further, we were very concerned with, with Save Helena West Side's concerns about, and the community's about going to the west. So we actually met with Save Helena West Side, and we explored this issue extensively. We did meet, I actually met with the property owner, that's the storage facility that is to the west of this project, and we discussed the possibility of us, you know, coming through his property to get to the, to that other portion, as you had indicated. The challenges that we have is several. First of all, we don't own the property, so that's the first hurdle that we'd have to overcome. We, we were chatting with that gentleman about possibilities of working out something there. Second is physical possibility. There's a cliff on that end of our property. We explored the opportunity of trying to create a road that would cut through his property and would attach to the adjacent road that's parallel, or the next one that, I, I, I'm sorry, I don't remember what that's called. But unfortunately, as is similar to some of the other roads within the development, that road would not meet the city or the county's standards, for, again, back to that grade limitations, as well as coming to those intersections. That's a, that's a dictating factor. And then the other thing that would be a really big deal is that access to that particular owner's property, one of those, one of those requirements is, there needs to be a certain amount of separation between a road and an access point on his property, and quite literally, you can't achieve it. Later on, I was going to show you a slide that shows you that circumstance, but it's, all of those stack up to the fact that it's just, it would be great, because I tell you what, if we could have made that happen, that would have definitely helped with a lot of the concerns that folks have here. One of the things that we do have an opportunity to do is, we don't, we don't own that land, so we can't require that person to sell it to us. But, you know, in future phases, which this, that portion would be affected in a future phase, the City of Helena does have the capacity and the capability of working with that landowner through those various statutes that allow them to work with them to gain access, and perhaps, as we have discussed earlier, rewrite some of their codes or some of their requirements that would allow for us to be able to physically create that access point. Another very, very large point is that the Helena's main water supply line runs right through that section, and that's a big deal. That's actually provides the majority of the water for Helena. That also is an obstacle for how all that could come together. So unfortunately, I wish it was a simple answer to your question, but there's just all these parts and pieces. But here's what I will tell you, is that we're very open to working with city staff prior to those future phases coming online, because remember, this will come on in a phased method. So we have an opportunity to continue to review this and work with city staff and work with you guys, and work with the community to try to create some opportunities to address some of these issues.
Thank you very much.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Are there other questions from the board at this point? I'm seeing any online either. All right, so now will be the opportunity for public comment. We have received extensive written comment that has been received by all of the board members, so to the extent that it's already received in written comment, I would encourage you not to rehash what's already been set forth there. To the extent that folks prior to you in speaking make the point that you're interested in making, I would just encourage you to say, you know, me too, that's sufficient, we don't need to reiterate with each speaker. But with all of that being said, we'll open up, I, I guess, we'll just start with proponents of the property as proposed, or of the, sorry, the plating as proposed. If there are any in the room, then we'll go to online. And please state your name and your address for the record.
Dave Carlson, 535 Sussex Court. I live very close to where the subdivision would be. I just, I feel like there is a very active, and I think SHW people have done a very good job of highlighting my concerns with the, the streets, et cetera. I mean, even today, I live all the way at the top of Granite, drive down Granite, dodging children, people walking their dogs, et cetera. I mean, that's a difficulty today, because there's no sidewalks on either side of the pavement, it's just ditches, so the kids can't really get off the street, or people can't get off the street. But I feel like Sussex has done an excellent job now, through all the conditions that have been listed, of really addressing that. And so I'm, I'm really for this, you know, from the, my working with Sussex, we are in a tiny, I guess, are we in infill? You know, so I'm in a, you know, a little bit of Sussex subdivision today, and I've been really pleased with that. I like the design with the cul-de-sacs, and the trail that connects the cul-de-sacs. You know, I went out and put a little post out there and signed it to make sure that people would use that, it also connects up to La Gran. And I think that this, in our, you know, I don't know how to say this out sounding, you know, I don't know, whatever, but in our kind of arts-focused, outdoor-focused community, I feel that this subdivision would really be a positive addition to that, with the trails, with the artwork, with the cul-de-sacs, which, you know, as a parent of three children, which are all big now, by the way, I really, really would have appreciated being on a cul-de-sac when they were little, rather than on Stewart Street. I'd lived about three blocks away for twenty years before where I live now, and it would have been great to have cul-de-sacs. I'm on a cul-de-sac now, it's terrific, the little kids can play right in the street, it's not a problem, I don't have to worry about cars zipping through there. So I just, I like the design of it, I like the trails running, I like the way that he's created more parkland right on that, right off of La Gran, you know, effectively extending the city park. So I, I think it would be terrific, I think it'd be a great addition to the city. And the, the proponent side of it, you know, as you can see, it's just me and the developer, you know, we're not, there are a lot of us, you know, that I talk to that are in favor of it, but we're not organized as the opposition is organized, and I feel that the numbers of comments skew what the actual popular opinion is of building this or not building this, because the opponents are just better organized getting people to send stuff in, they send out emails all the time. We're obviously not doing that, because we're not a were, we're just people, you know, miscellaneous people, and haven't organized in proponent, as proponents of it. That's what I have.
Thank you. Are there further proponents?
Thank you.
Are there any online? Oh, go ahead.
Mr. White, I was a former owner of this property, and there's something you guys really need to think about, what you're doing with this man. This property that he's developing, he developed just up above there, next to my dad's property, I own both sides of La Gran Cannon Boulevard. Due to the situation I was in, I had to sell it all. But he's been gracious enough to allow me to speak, and I'm going to do it in behalf of him, because my father wanted it developed, that's why he sued you back in 1973. In 1976, we won 1.8 million dollars, that you guys are supposed to supply, and with roads and water. You can check that. I want to see this go in for two reasons. One, it was already predeveloped way back in the seventies, and why are we hashing this out again with the public? I mean, most of the people that have moved in ain't from Helena, Montana. My family's been here a hundred and fifty years. Can you say that, sir? You'd rather not answer. My family's been here a long time, we've held a lot of land for a long time, and I want to see it developed. I want to see Helena become something on the west side. This man knows how to do it. He is one of the people I, I would love to build my house for me. But the way it is now, you guys got to let this guy do his thing, because he has done a great job everywhere else, and I don't see any other place, or any other thing that he's going to do, other than a great job. He talked to my dad, great man, very respectful of my father. My dad didn't care much for you folks, I just want to let you know that right up front. He didn't like the county either. But, in that, I'm trying to build something with you guys. Work these guys out. Help them out. Do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there further proponents?
We have a hand raised online.
Great, let's go to that.
Yes, planning commissioners, my name is Wilbur Raymond, I'm chairman of the Non-Motorized Transportation Advisory Committee for the City of Helena. We're an appointed advisory committee, and we've met and had a lengthy discussion about, not the subdivision per se, but about recommendations to the city commission in regard to non-motorized transportation, essentially walking, bicycling, using walkers or canes or handicap devices. And we passed a number of resolutions at our last meeting, and I'm not necessarily speaking as a proponent. I guess I'm a neutral on this, I just wanted to let you on the planning board know what resolutions the Non-Motorized Transportation Advisory Commission made. And so if, if that's okay with you, I'd like to go ahead and read you, there are about six, six of them, and I can do it pretty quickly. Is that agreeable?
It might be easier if you want to just sum them up for us, Mr. Raymond.
I'm sorry, I could not hear that.
It might be easier if you want to summarize them for us, rather than just read them into the record, though we'd be happy to receive them electronically if you'd like to email them to city staff.
And who do I email them to?
It'd be April Sparks would take the email, and I think she can put it in chat to you, so you've got it that way, that's probably the easiest.
Put it, I'm sorry, it's a very muffled microphone.
Mr. Raymond, I am going to drop my email address into the chat to you, so that way you can send, send them to me, and my name's April.
Okay. That would be fine. Let me summarize quickly, then, the resolutions passed by the non-motorized transportation. That, one, that all relevant streets be made up to complete streets, including Hauser, Granite... including Hauser, Granite, Park, Flowery, Woodward, Silverette, and Shoto. Number two, improvements to include curb bullbouts at Granite and Knight and Granite and Overlook with rectangular rapid flash beacons. Three, curb bullbouts and complete streets recommendations, if features not included in the complete street standards. That is, bullbouts again to allow traffic to slow and pedestrians and other walkers and bicyclists to pass. And then lastly, to condition annexation with an evaluation of the feasibility of a western access, which you just recently discussed. And those really are them. I will email them. To who? Should I do them? Please repeat.
Wilbur, I dropped my email in the chat. My name is April Sparks. You'll find it, find my email address there.
All right, thank you very much. Those are all the resolutions. Many of these were already discussed with both the developer and the citizens group who's opposing the development. And our conclusion was that these are things that we would like, and we will send this on to the city commission too, in terms of their decisions on making a non-motorized transportation more accessible to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there further proponents, either in the room or online?
We have Darcy Larson online.
Sorry, can you guys hear me?
Again, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Hi, I am Darcy Larson, 1519 Concord Road in Helena, Montana. I thank you, chairman and members of the committee for listening to us. But I am, again, Darcy Larson. I'm the executive officer of Helena Building Industry Association, and I represent all of the local builders, suppliers, and tradesmen in our local area. And I'll keep it short, just to respect all of your time and for everybody speaking up. But on behalf of the 188 members that we have at the Helena Building Industry Association, you know, we are in support of this subdivision. You know, we support local developers, local builders, local trades, local suppliers. And that is so important to our community. And as a group together, we want to see this go through. So, you know, just for the future of our industry and our association, but more so for the future of our community. This is such a, such a big project that will, in so many ways, support our economy here locally. So thank you for hearing me out. Just want you to know, for the record, HBIA is in full support of Westside Wood subdivision.
Are there further proponents?
Yes, there are. First, we have Carrie.
Hi there, my name is Carrie Wolf, 2475 T Road in Helena. I am a Helena native, was born and raised here. And I left Helena for almost two decades and decided that I really wanted to return to my hometown, to my love, to my family, to this amazing city. When we came back, it was very, very difficult to find housing within the community, and it's only gotten more so restricted. I would really like to say that I think this is a beautifully planned and designed property. I do think that it is, provides necessary housing. I think it's amazing that it is set to be annexed into the city. We would have loved to have done that when we moved back here, but that just was not in the cards for us, unfortunately, due to the lack of housing. And I just wanted to voice my support. I think this is an amazing plan, and I think you have an amazing builder who's working very hard to get this put through. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there further proponents? Cassie, if you want to unmute yourself. Maybe we want to come back. Is there another proponent?
I do not have any other hands raised.
Okay. Is there anybody else in the room? Cassie, are you able to unmute yourself? All right, we can come back to you later if we can get that figured out. So with that, we'll switch to opponents in the room.
Sorry, my legs are a little stiff from sitting there so long, as I'm sure yours are as well. I have a few handouts here to be able to reference, some comments. I'm not sure if they can be distributed to those planning board members who are in attendance. There's four of you. Yes, these have all, there's pieces that have already been submitted, yes. So, and I won't be reading it per se, but just referencing things. Not all of them have been included in the public comment, unfortunately, even though they were sent to the city.
Could you please state your name?
Yeah, my name is Sarah Perry. I live at 2636 Woodward Avenue. I'm the president of Save Helena West Side, which is a neighborhood group that was formed to advocate for safety concerns on the west side of Helena. Again, you don't need to necessarily read right off of what I sent, but I will reference a few things in there as I go throughout my comments here. I was told by community development director Chris Brink that as a representative of a larger group, I could speak slightly longer, but I won't plan to go too long because I know the night is wearing on. But I do want to make sure that, I reiterate, that Montana Code annotated 76-3-605 in talking about hearings on subdivisions states that the planning board shall, and I quote, "consider all relevant evidence relating to public health, safety, and welfare." All relevant evidence. And then using that, determine, and I quote, "whether the subdivision application should be approved, conditionally approved, or denied." I also want to note that Montana Code annotated 76-3-608, Section 4, states that the subdivision may be required to, quote, "design the proposed subdivision to minimize potentially significant adverse impacts to public health and safety," end quote. So two key things there. Number one, you are supposed to hear all relevant evidence pertaining to public health and safety in this hearing before you make a decision. And two, that a subdivider may be required to make changes or additional improvements to mitigate significant adverse impacts to public health and safety. Now, in the staff report that you just heard kind of summarized, there was a lengthy list of conditions, right? Those were added to be able to meet that requirement, to reasonably minimize some of those potentially significant adverse impacts to public health and safety. Unfortunately, the findings of fact in the staff report and the comments that they provided to you don't capture all of those negative impacts. Notably, one letter that was not included in there, though we did submit it in our notes, and it will be addressed further by our council, is that Lewis and Clark County Sheriff Leo Dutton submitted comment to the city development director, Chris Brink, on February 8th of 2023, subject line "Evacuation Concerns." That is on, I think, the third page of the packet that I just handed out, and I've highlighted the key points. He said he has concerns about why there's no exit on the west side. He has evacuation concerns for this neighborhood. He states he has 37 years of experience regarding evacuations and is the county fire warden responsible for evacuations. I think we can safely state that Sheriff Leo Dutton has more experience carrying out evacuations and knowing the potential concerns and challenges relating to that than anyone else in this community. And he has expressed those concerns. Unfortunately, they weren't considered in the findings of fact. So I ask you, have you really been presented all of the relevant evidence pertaining to public health and safety? And have all of the potentially significant adverse impacts to public health and safety been mitigated? I would say not. The question was posed about whether or not, or why a western access wasn't talked about. And the developer said that there were a number of challenges. Private property, absolutely. Save Helena West Side initiated conversations with the owner of that property, and he has submitted a letter that was included in the public comment. He submitted a letter to director Chris Brink indicating his willingness to grant an easement. Private property, not an issue here. Physical limitations, the developer stated that it can't be built in a way that meets code. We've done preliminary engineering analysis with an expert, and it shows that they can. It can be done. It can't be done in a straight-line shot, like the developer included in their proposal, but if it does curve with the topography of that high point that they mentioned, it can be built in a way that meets engineering standards. You just heard the chair of the Non-Motorized Travel Advisory Council state that that was one of the things that they talked about, that there needed to be feasibility to evaluate that. Because, and in the meeting where that motion was made, they indicated that their motivation for that motion was because there needed to be a way to alleviate the traffic impact around Kessler School. Without a western access, every single vehicle, construction or otherwise, that comes from this subdivision will be driving on school routes. Whether it be Granite to Kessler, or if they come by way of Hauser, Hauser, which has no sidewalks, from Granite East, that's where there are bus stops for C.R. Anderson students. My oldest son waits on Hauser, where there are no sidewalks for the bus. So any, any traffic coming to and from the subdivision that goes along Hauser, construction or otherwise, is conflicting with school routes to St. Andrews, to Hawthorne School, where students are waiting to catch the bus, and to C.R. Anderson. There needs to be a way to safely divert some of the traffic away from those routes to schools. The third, there was a third-party review of the traffic impact study done by Transportation Systems Incorporated. They indicated that there was concern that there would be, as Granite becomes busier, queuing of the cars all the way up to where they would be conflicting with the crosswalk for Kessler students. So we're talking about putting so much new traffic on Granite that now students, even from the new subdivision, that are trying to cross over Granite are going to be having trouble getting through because of traffic. That's another reason why there needs to be a western access point, something to divert. Without that, without that western access, it's too many vehicles on those streets that aren't built in a way to be able to accommodate them. The developer showed a map where they were looking at what the density, the zoning, the lot sizes to the east of this subdivision. I want you to know that most of those lots don't have the number of houses that are shown there. There will be infill. As city services come to this area, there will be infill of those lots. There will be, by our calculations, at least 100 additional lots in the neighborhood immediately to the west that will have the potential to have new homes built on them as infill, which we know is generally encouraged in the city's growth policy. So that's looking at another 1,000-plus additional vehicle trips per day on Granite and Hauser, just from the lots to the east. And yet, we're still saying we're going to add another 1,500 from this subdivision. It's just not safe, and we're putting children's lives at risk by doing this. I also want to point out that, for some reason, it wasn't included in your packets. But if you look, your packets from the city, but if you look in the next page after the letter from the sheriff, there's a letter from MDT. Your packets included some informal email correspondence between the developer and MDT, but notably and concerningly, did not include the official comment letter from MDT that was sent to the planning department regarding this subdivision on November 1st of 2021. Emails from December of 2021 were included in your packet, but not this email from November 1st, 2021, on MDT's letterhead, in which it says that while no other approach location between Granite and Williams was found to be acceptable, which is what I believe you referenced, that MDT wasn't interested in a new approach. But MDT said exactly what you, sir, Mr. Commissioner, had recommended, which is that the development may be able to access the existing traffic signal location, assuming a feasible east-west route is determined. So that, that suggestion that you keep hearing from neighborhood members that an east-west route be considered came from MDT themselves. That's what they suggested as well. And that's what our preliminary engineering analysis is showing could be feasible if it's done to follow the topography of the land. And so we're asking that you recommend an additional condition requiring construction of a new road connecting Livsey Court to the existing park lane to not only eliminate one of the problematic dead-end streets, but to provide safer roads around Kessler School and to be in accordance with Sheriff Leo Dutton's evacuation concerns and request for additional western access. We also would ask that you recommend denial of the exceptions for the dead-end streets, particularly for Flowery Court, Breakman Court, and Livsey Court. This was a comment that was made by city transportation engineer Mark Young. The developer has publicly agreed to consider alternatives to dead-end streets, and so we would ask that you force them to do that by recommending denial of those exceptions. Flowery Court is a dead-end street that's nearly 600 feet as a public right-of-way. And if you look at that large multifamily lot on the end of it, it's going to have an additional, probably 500 feet, of a private hammerhead directly in the wildland urban interface. U.S. Forest Service fire models, which are included in your packet, show that in this neighborhood, under typical fire conditions, a fire could start, under typical fire season conditions, a fire could start more than two or three miles away, and there would be less than one hour to fully evacuate the upper west end of Helena. Not just this neighborhood, but the neighborhoods to the east of it as well, to fully evacuate the entire upper west end of Helena. So those streets to the east are going to be filled with residents on those streets having to evacuate. And so there's a real need here to have greater access for a potential rapid evacuation. So again, denying the dead-end street exceptions and requiring greater connectivity would be in accordance with the safety concerns that unfortunately were not included in the findings of fact. Area residents have been voicing concerns about safety for nearly two years. The planning board, when this nearly identical submission came forth in November of 21, 21, recommended unanimously to deny each of the dead-end streets due to safety concerns. There were variances at that time, not exceptions, and there was a unanimous recommendation for each of those five dead-end street variances to be denied. The city commission voted unanimously in January of 2021 to deny each of the long block length variances. Again, that interpretation of that law has changed. They're now being called exceptions. But there are people, elected officials, and members of your own board who have already unanimously expressed concerns. And yet, after all that, rather than make a single change to address those safety concerns, the developer instead has worked with city staff to change the interpretation of the rules. So what you're seeing here is no real change in the plans, just continued efforts to get around the limitations and failed to address the significant threats to public safety. Threats that have been confirmed by the Lewis and Clark County Sheriff's Office, U.S. Forest Service models, and recommendations by the Non-Motorized Transportation Advisory Council. And so I would ask, as you reflect on the additional evidence that we're providing here from the sheriff's office, from the U.S. Forest Service, and from the Non-Motorized Travel Advisory Council, none of which were included in the findings of fact. I would ask you, is this subdivision built in accordance with the requirements of state law for potentially significant negative impacts to things like public safety to be mitigated? If you don't believe so, then we would ask that you please recommend additional conditions. If those additional conditions cannot be recommended, then we ask that you recommend denial until a viable solution is present to mitigate those. Staff identified in their presentation that you just received that there are increased call times for emergency services. But I fail to see how any of their conditions that they have provided address this. There is no additional access provided. There isn't anything that can cut down on those increased call times. So how can they conclude that the impact will be mitigated? This does not align with the city's growth policy to prioritize public health and safety, and it does not follow city and state code. And so, because these findings of fact don't even include the sheriff's stated concerns as well as the others that I've mentioned, I would also ask that you... I would also ask that you reject the findings of fact in your motion until those safety concerns that have been expressed can be included. Director Brink has said that he wants to be fully transparent and wants to make sure that those of you making decisions have all of the relevant information. So give him the chance to give you all that relevant information, I would ask. And I will leave you with this and would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
All right, thank you for the opponents.
In 1991, my father approached Leo Dutton about a fire mitigation plan along La Grand Cannon Boulevard. There's a bridge up there that they would have to reinstate for use, but it could be used in emergency situations. Both the gates on La Grand Cannon Boulevard, your chairman brought up about the intersection down there at William Street and La Grand Cannon. There's full access to the west side from up above on La Grand Cannon Boulevard. There's full access to the same property on Silverette, up to the gate and down this way.
Thank you, Mr. White. Are there further opponents?
Mr. Chair, we have a hand raised online.
Are there opponents in the room before we get to online?
Mr. Chairman and Board Members, thank you for hearing us. My name is Forrest Zimmerman. I live at 2615 Knight Street, City of Helena. I'm also a board member with Save Helena Westside. As the engineer in the group, I just wanted to reiterate a couple of the technical things that we have evaluated. I'm not going to repeat what our President Sarah said. I'm going to reiterate a couple of points in more technical detail. One of those is the Western connection. We did obtain the topography for that area, submitted that to a professional engineer licensed to do construction work, civil engineering work within the state of Montana. And his report, preliminary at this point due to the timeframe, is that there is a feasible path to connect the western side, Livesay, down to Park Lane. There is also Clark Place, a current county right-of-way that would continue directly over to Williams. Those are the, that's the exact path that MDT responded with their letter on the initial consideration of this application as something that should be considered should a Western connection be, should there be a desire to approach that. That's what MDT's recommendation was. That has been deemed doable by our own professional engineer and as well as our own conversations that I've had personally with Tim Drake, who owns those storage units, to make a path down through that private property. Being the developer, both of the partners, leading partners in the developer have both publicly stated that they would love to have a Western connection as well, but they would not consider it in this go-around unless they were forced by the city to consider it. We would invite you to consider recommending that a Western connection be applied or be added to this as a condition of it going forward. This would be under the authority of the city commission to require additional connectivity should it be deemed necessary. And to that point of being deemed necessary, a lot of talks was given, the streets are being built to complete streets, they're being proved over dirt streets, all that's great. Those are improvements. Those will be improvements for the existing residents and as well as the people moving into the new subdivision. However, the extra traffic will mitigate a lot of that benefit if it all goes just to the east. 100% of the traffic from this subdivision goes east to Granite. There's no other connection from any other direction. Now, as a matter of evacuation, streets are not a bunch of individual streets. They also act as a system, an interconnected system. That's why connectivity is so important here. One malfunction on Granite Street, which we've seen during school drop-off time, backs the whole area. People don't automatically know what to do and get backed up in queues when there's a malfunctioning traffic system. If the front door, so to speak, of the subdivision went to the west side, that would divert, all of the construction traffic could be diverted away from Kessler School coming into the subdivision. And with further connections made within the subdivision, which our own traffic engineer with the city has put in his comics, must happen, his words, not mine, those connections of those cul-de-sacs must happen. Those together could do that. They could draw the traffic away or as our HCC Commissioner or Helena Citizens Council District 1 representative said, deflate the east side away from Kessler and bring it over to the west side, which they are in favor, they are in support of as well. So traffic as a system is important to consider here. The other thing to consider is that the traffic study that was supported or that was supplied by the developer, we had that professionally reviewed by a company licensed to do just that in the state of Montana. And they found several faults with it. Now, the city also did a review this time around and it found several faults with the developer's traffic information study. One of the faults that's been found with the developer's study is the distribution of traffic within the subdivision. They claim most of it is going to come down Livesay, go up the hill and up to via Hauser and then connect to Granite and then go back down the hill. That's a twice as, approximately twice as long a path as coming out of Livesay, taking a left and going into, using Knight Street to connect. It's the shortest, most unmitigated path. It's also the path that everyone out there takes now. We have this magic assumption, this magic transportation, or traffic information study that says otherwise with no clear or compelling reasons spelled out as engineering standards require. We've had that professionally reviewed, that's been caught. The city's engineering view of the traffic study has called out several shortcomings as well. You didn't hear about any of those from the developer. You're hearing about them from us. Now, we've heard a lot of support for this subdivision, including our own group. We're not saying we shouldn't develop, we're not against the developer. These curated homes being bought in the area will have an effect for Helena that is needed. We're just saying, and all the people that are saying, that are in support are people who benefit from building. Great, let's get the win-win situation here. Let's let Helena benefit from this subdivision. Let's let these people who will have jobs and supply materials and sell houses, let's let them benefit, but let's do it with proper consideration to public safety and public health. One other thing that wasn't considered is the actual traffic based on zoning density. That's supposed to be considered. That makes the vehicle traffic numbers go up substantially when you look at the zoning as it would normally be populated. These plans are for minimum build of the subdivision. With every lot that's zoned, could be, without permit or exception by the city, be double occupancy, could be two houses on everyone. In today's housing market, there's a lot of call for that. And there's nothing that says every one of the lots couldn't have two houses on them. There's no other way to zone it. There's no single-family zoning in the City of Helena to say only have one resident, one single-family resident. So they could all be two, so we could have substantially higher traffic. The traffic information studies have not considered that, additional traffic that likely would be here. The long block lengths, there's a reason Mountain View Meadows didn't have any opposition because it's done right. The streets are great. There was no opposition to it. 150-foot block length, 650 versus 600, with streets connecting at both ends and they're not in an urban-wildland boundary. In an urban-wildland boundary, that's where you need the streets to connect the most because that's where you might have to get out, based on our USDA fire study, in as little as an hour. Now, evacuation, Sheriff Dutton's concerns, and I do have some firsthand experience with being in charge of evacuation, and you have to look at it as the unmitigated evacuation that happens initially. Then you, if you have the chance, if it's a fast enough like a fire event, people are just going to have to start leaving. They're going to have to self-evacuate, so you get that dynamic. Then you have the managed dynamic when law enforcement, first responders come on. Giving the Western access will give them a lot more ways to manage which side, based on the fire scenario, is safest to get people out and direct people that way while leaving the other way available for law enforcement to come in and out. It gives them lots of options on a managed evacuation. I do have some experience with that and I know exactly where he's coming from on that. So we'd ask you to consider these technical details that the long block lengths that are being asked for are in combination with dead-end streets. This isn't Mountain View Meadows asking for 50 additional feet when everything's connected regularly with 100% good connectivity. This is multiple dead ends with extensions of private roads beyond those dead ends that any one of those phases that have those wouldn't be allowed as a subdivision with the vehicle trips that are planned for just that one street if that was the only way in and out of that subdivision. If Phase 4 of this subdivision was presented as a standalone subdivision, the vehicle trips per day for Flowery Court, as a standalone subdivision, if it wasn't part of the rest of the subdivision, wouldn't be allowed because there's only one way in and out for a subdivision that has over 200 vehicle trips per day. So we would ask you to consider either denying it as-is so that it can be redesigned such that these concerns are met. A lot of these problems are self-imposed by the developer by the way it's designed. And what we hear for a reason it's needed to be designed this way is because you can't connect a straight line from one court to the other and meet all the conditions. Well, that is a true statement. I will back him on that. Great problems, absolutely. If you take it the way it's designed now and only connect a straight line between two streets and say, well, since you can't do that, the problem can't be solved. That's self-generating the problem and then saying there's no solution just because one solution doesn't work. This can be mitigated and meet the safety needs that we're asking for. We would ask you to deny it or put additional conditions to consider the Western connection at this time. The city commission voted against it last time. It has not changed. I know there's a question about what's changed? Virtually nothing. It doesn't require a different zoning vote. It's that close. All the lots and all the sizes are exactly the same. There's the same number of lots.
Mr. Zimmerman, to the extent that you're repeating prior testimony, I'd ask you to wrap it up. If we have 15 minutes per opponent, we're going to be here till 3:00 in the morning.
Right. Like I said, we're speaking for a large group that's done a lot of work on this and I do appreciate that consideration you've given us. So we would consider letting us, letting, work with these needs that have been addressed by the community and by other professionals and allow them to solve those problems before being allowed to proceed with the subdivision. Thank you very much for extending us this extra time.
Lois, did you have a question?
Yes, before the presenters off, Mr. Zimmerman, was your traffic engineer who looked at this Western access and gave a preliminary report, did he consider the city's water main that is in that area?
The city water main was not part of any of the traffic, but the actual traffic study, but the study for the feasibility of the Western connection absolutely considered where that pipe is and the street. The easement is actually going down that hill, is actually on the private property, there's 20-foot easement, well into the private property lots on the other side of where this road would go. And then, we wouldn't, the way to do it wouldn't be to connect it straight up over where that pipe draws, where that city water main jogs over. We would be to the north of that pipe and it wouldn't affect the pipe in any way, shape, or form. The proper way to make that connection would not involve going over the city water main, if that answers your question.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there further opponents in the room? And again, I'd just reiterate, if we can avoid repetition of prior testimony, that would be appreciated.
My name is Greg Duncan. I'm an attorney here in Helena. I represent Robert and Carol Kohler. And Robert and Carol are the owners of Lot 1A through 1E in the Overlook subdivision which butts up against this subdivision. And my argument is totally different, although it sounds like the folks have some good arguments. I do have some, a handout for you. Our concern prim, well, I'll wait till the handout is.
You can go ahead, please.
There's only so many of them. Here's an additional one. Oh, you got enough? Our concern primarily is with the stormwater problem. The proposal that the developer has is to take all of the stormwater from the 58 acres and drop it into a little draw, run it down to a little area that butts up against my client's property where there would be a pond and then cut across my client's property to get the water completely off of the property. The concern we have is somewhere it was overlooked, but the city doesn't have an easement where the developer is proposing to go. And what I have given you is a case, and it's a 2008 case. It's called Blazer versus Wall. It was a case out of Kalispell, heard by the Montana Supreme Court that laid out a lot of analysis of easements in Montana. Easements in Montana, at least since 2008, require that they be explicit and to simply refer to an easement on a plat is not good enough. There's got to be a written explanation of what that easement is, showing what the dominant and subservient estates are, where the easement's located, and the extent of the easement. I've, the case is about 16 pages long. I've only included a couple of pages here. I've highlighted in yellow some of the more prominent findings of the court. For example, if you just turn to the first page, they talk about a decision in a case they had previously where they held that the depiction of an easement on a reference plant is not sufficient to demonstrate the grantor's intent to create an easement for the benefit of a non-party. What has happened is if you go a little further down in the pile below the case I've cited, you'll see an easement that Carol and Robert gave to the City of Helena, where they did give them an easement. What I'd ask is if you look at that easement, you will see that at the bottom, where it talks about the easement on page 1, it says, "The easement granted hereby is for the purpose of allowing the city access to enter upon and operate, maintain, replace, repair, reconstruct, and remove the existing stormwater facility and the water and water right mains together with any necessary pertinence over and across the property" as shown on plat 3211742. That plat is two pages below that. That's this plat. And if you review that plat, you will see a cross-hatched area where the city was given the easement. And if you read the entire easement, I just read you a small part of it, the easement was for the purposes of consolidating the prior easements and working out an easement with the Kohlers. If you read on the right-hand side, and I've blown that up into a second sheet because it's very small, it says, "We hereby grant unto each and every person, firm or corporation, whether public or private, providing or offering to provide telephone, telegraph, electric, gas, cable, television, water, and sewer services to the public, the right to the joint use of their lines and other locations under each area designated on this plat as underground utility easement." If you go back to the plat, that's two places on the plat. And if, it'd be on the west side of the hatch area and the east side of the hatch area, it states that that is the underground utility easement. The easement that the developer has attempted to use, if you will look on this plat, is a little dashed line that doesn't show any meets and bounds. All it states is that it is a 20-foot wide easement. In fact, I can't even read it on mine, but basically it's an easement for an underground pipe that Norman, or Norbert Waldenmeyer put in when he developed Overlook. I have gone to three title companies. I've gone to the county. I've gone to the city. I've gone to the public works. Nobody has an easement that describes that line that was put on there for reasons that we don't know why, but it does not appear on the original Overlook plat, which is also referenced as. referenced as Certificate of Survey 3105881, which I've also included. It's, it's not on there, on Lot One. There simply isn't an easement where Sussex wants to come through with their stormwater. They don't have one. Mr. Kohler doesn't want them to go through there and rip up his property. And in addition to that, he's built three units on these lots. One of them's within 10 feet of where the storage pond's going to be. The property line is to the west of where this culvert that's now in there, there's a little 24-inch culvert. I don't know how many feet, but I'd guess it's 15 or 20 feet to the southwest where the property line comes through. So Sussex has to, number one, trespass on the property of the Kohlers, and then they have to, or they're trying to use an easement that doesn't even exist. Not only that, but if you impound that much water on fill, which these buildings are built on, within 10 feet of them, you're going to cause some instability and problems with that. Mr. Kohler has not opposed the subdivision. He's like the rest of us. He realizes subdivision's going to happen. It's part of living here. But what he is asking is that the subdivision be denied because it's not complete. The stormwater can't be put where it is legally, and, you know, we're not sure what we're going to do with that. But if you read that case, and maybe Ms. Doctor wants to read it, I don't know, I'm pretty sure she will, I've worked with her before, but I think you'll find that somewhere along the line, somebody overlooked that. And in order to actually use that easement, Sussex is going to have to relocate their drain and put it through the easement that's already shown there, if, if that's even feasible at this time. But, so, I'm not going to spend a lot of time beating it to death. I will point out, let's see, I'm just looking here. On a document marked October 6, 2021, and I believe it was the, from the projected details of the city, I've included that page, it actually addresses that the stormwater storage pond located just south of the Overlook subdivision could significantly impact the existing condominium, condominiums to the immediate north. So it was recognized at one time that there was a problem with the stormwaters. And now what we have is a pond that was designed for 20 lots, being used for an additional 58 acres of pavement, houses, roofs, all the discharge is projected to go down that draw. So we're asking that based on the fact that there isn't a legal easement on, to Mr. Kohler's property, that their plan be denied. Thank you.
Lois, did you have a question?
Yeah, I have a short question for staff.
Thank you.
And I, I don't need a lengthy answer. Staff aware of this issue, and have you reviewed it?
So I'm looking for the Public Works Director to answer this question. I think there's a difference of opinion between staff and the owners' counsel, but I would defer any, any answer, any question to Ryan.
And he's raising his hand.
And Ryan is online.
Thank you, Chair Commissioner. As we've been aware of this and have talked to the Kohlers, the information that is out there is that it hasn't gone, if there is a legal challenge to the easement document that was presented and has been found in our records, then we'll have to go through the legal issue. But this is aware of it, and it has been reviewed, and those ponds have to be constructed and designed to not impact the downstream property, and you have to design a pond to not increase the amount of flow that goes off or concentrate the flow unless you have a path to be able to send it off. So those ponds have to be able to detain the 100-year storm and then not discharge over the storm or increase the amount. And then if you do concentrate it, then you have to have a pipe through the property downstream, or you can discharge at the historic rate and the historic area. You know, if you spread it out and you still provide the amount of stormwater that is going there now, that is permissible by city code and engineering standards.
Thank you. I, I just wanted to make sure that staff was aware of it. Thank you, and had looked at it.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Further opponents in the room?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, sorry, I wasn't sure who was going to talk. I was trying to go at the end. So I just, my name's Rob Farris Olsen, F-A-R-R-I-S hyphen O-L-S-E-N. I'm an attorney for Save Helena Westside, and I just had a few points for you tonight. First of all, Mr. Chair, to your question, whether you can consider self-inflicted problems, I think the language may be different here versus a variance, but you still need to consider the totality of the circumstances, whether there for, whether it is for the dead ends, a compelling circumstance, or for the 600-feet variance, excuse me, exception, whether there is a need. In order to evaluate that, you have to look at the other options available. It's not just the option that's presented to you. If there are other options, those need to be analyzed. Because the way I read need, and I hope you do all as well, is that something is required, meaning if there's an alternative to that, to that option, it is not required. And with compelling circumstances, and maybe, Mr. Chair, you're familiar with some of this language, I think that is a heightened burden versus an undue hardship for a variance. So while they may not need a variance, and I disagree with the way that that's phrased, but taking it at, taking it as it's been proposed, I think there is a heightened standard for them to obtain these exceptions. And we haven't seen that heightened standard met. Because as the previous commenters have noted, this is all self-inflicted. There have not been alternative designs looked at in almost two years. Why not? I don't know, but they're out there. And so that brings me to my second point. We need to look and think beyond straight lines. As Mr. Zimmer pointed out, everything we've looked at and that has been presented by the developer is a straight line connecting Point A to Point B in the shortest possible route. I guess there was the one exception for the, the north, southernmost road, looking at the loop. But that's still only looking at that exact dead-end layout. Why not look at alternative options? There may be fewer houses built, fewer multifamily units built, but it may be safer and better for the community as a whole. Because these dead-end streets and these elongated block lengths, you've heard from my clients, you've heard from Sheriff Dutton, that these do create evacuation risks. Imagine a fire coming down, for example, on, say, the east side of this development, coming down on the east side of Granite Street. These are all dead-end streets. Those folks will have nowhere to go. There will be no other access points for emergency services like fire. That's why we need something like the west end, or at least internal connectors, so you can get someone to the north end of the street and get them out onto Euclid. But those don't exist. And that was a choice by the developer. They didn't have to do it, yet they chose to. So again, I encourage you to think beyond straight lines. Next, I think it's important to realize that these are exceptions. They are not the rule. There are five streets in this development. There are five dead-end streets in this development. How many exceptions do they want? Eight. At this point, the exception has subsumed the rule. They also pointed out that just next door in one of their other developments, there's two more dead ends. So now you've got this whole area full of dead ends that create the safety risks my clients have mentioned. The exception is no longer an exception, but the rule. And I think this body needs to be aware that when you create that many exceptions to the rule, the exception no longer exists. And last, I think it's important for this body to realize that the public health and safety risks haven't been mitigated. In all of the conditions, they talk about complete streets, improving the access to the, to the actual development. But those don't address the evacuation concerns, the lack of internal connections, the lack of a Western's access point. Those don't actually mitigate for the increased times that it's going to take fire services to get there, that it's going to take for, say, St. Pete's ambulance to get there. They don't account for the 80 or so multifamily housing units that are going to be built at the end of Flowery. Now, not only do you have that 600-plus-foot dead end, but you've got to get an emergency service into what was previously a Hammerhead dead end. So it's a dead end on a dead end. Now, that may not be the ultimate development, but the problem still exists. You have a dead end upon a dead end, further increasing the risk to public safety of those people and those outside of it. And while I appreciate the previous owner's note that there are other gates, those gates only work if you have time to get to them and open them. In a fire situation, where we've heard from the U.S. Forest Service, you may have an hour to evacuate. I think it's incredibly difficult for someone with a key to go against all of the traffic and open these gates that are on theoretically the south side of the development, where people aren't going to be going. They're going to be going to the sap, to the north and to the east, because the fire comes from Mount Helena. They're not going to be driving to the fire. So not only will you not get those gates open in time, but people won't use them. That's why this, this creates a risk for fire. So at the end of the day, I ask you, and my clients have asked you, to deny or recommend denial of this, and this subdivision, and because of all of those risks and problems with it. At a minimum, I think this body has the ability to reject those exceptions, much like you would reject a variance. And I think you should do it for the reasons I've stated. So thank you very much for your time tonight. I know this has been a long process.
Thank you. Are there further opponents in the room? All right, are there opponents online?
We have Diana Hammer.
We'll get him. Thank you. Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, and I'll try to keep this short. Thank you for your attention. My name is Diana Hammer. I'm a Helena Citizens Council Representative of District One. District One, as you may know, runs along the base of Mount Helena, and many of the residents you've heard, heard from tonight reside in the district that I represent. We've heard, we've been following the proposed subdivision for well over a year, and we've had numerous conversations with both the developer and the neighborhood group, Save Helena Westside, and some of the residents of that area. The main concerns we've heard relate to the increase in traffic on the east, and I won't repeat what the testimony you've heard just, just a few minutes ago, but that traffic on Granite, Hauser, and Knight Streets. So in collaboration with the other Helena Citizens Council District One representatives, we submitted a letter to the planning board and to the City Commission suggesting a way to create a win-win-win situation with this development. We agree, as the developer and with the city staff report, that there are many reasons to support the Westside Woods development, and I won't repeat those. However, as Director Brink mentioned, there currently 85% of the public comments oppose this development, and Helena Citizens Council District One doesn't oppose the development. We just think it could be developed in a way that better addresses the need for housing and the concerns of the neighbors. So with an additional condition requiring a Western access, we would recommend that the, the Planning Commission consider requiring a Western access to alleviate many of the concerns that have just recently been addressed. And just to keep it brief, I would say that we have an opportunity to alleviate the traffic concerns and still allow our community to grow in a responsible manner while providing the housing and addressing the neighborhood concerns. So with that, I think that would truly be a win-win-win situation for that, for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Further opponents?
Thank you. My name is Colleen Nichols. I live at 913 Granite. I'm directly south of Kessler School, and I've been at my address for over 35 years. I'm, a couple of things I want to appreciate, I want to say my appreciation to the city for recommending the roundabout at the corner of Granite and Hauser. We've had a really big concern with traffic, speeding traffic on that intersection, and irregardless of what happens with Westside Woods, that, that roundabout needs to move forward. These are my granddaughters, Addison and McKenna, beautiful little girls who both go to Kessler School. And I'm going to speak on a personal note. Last year, when this proposal came before the Planning Board, the recommendation was that there would be complete streets on all, complete streets with sidewalks on all streets adjacent to the subdivision. For some reason, when it came forward this year, there's only complete streets on Hauser and, and Granite, and Granite from Knight to Hauser. We need complete streets in that whole area, not, those streets were just going to be done in Phase One, the, the other streets were going to be done, I believe, in Phase Three. We need complete streets in our whole area if this subdivision goes forward. We have so many kids who don't walk to school now because of the danger of walking there. There's going to be such a substantial increase in traffic, especially the construction traffic. The construction traffic is what is my biggest nightmare. There's going to be basically two ways out of this subdivision, Hauser and Knight, both of which are routes to school. Without that Western access, every vehicle is going to go on Granite or Hauser. Please think about a generation of children attending Kessler who will be forced to breathe heavy construction diesel traffic fumes at every recess, they'll be put in danger during an evacuation, or the nightmare scenario of a large construction truck crashing into the schoolyard at Kessler. I'm urging you to, to recommend that the complete streets be done if this subdivision proceeds forward, and if not, please deny the preliminary plat approval until that all of our concerns are addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Further opponents? April, just so I know, do we have more online? Anybody? Okay, go ahead.
Yes, my name's Ed Santos. I'm at 2530 Flowery. And I'll try to keep this brief. You know, you just heard specific solutions for safer neighborhoods surrounding the Westside Woods, both practical and legal. I'd like to further comment on this process, but from a different, a little bit different perspective. Sussex Construction has privately and publicly stated, most recently at this meeting, that they understand the concerns surrounding the subdivision and would be willing to resolve these concerns. However, they're not going to offer their solutions. They'll let the city tell them what they need to do. In light of this dynamic, clearly, it's now the city's responsibility to dictate what needs to be done to, to have a safer neighborhood. The safety of the neighborhood and children rests squarely on the city's shoulders, and as a condition of annexation, these safety requirements can be demanded. The builder has presented his plan, Save West Helena has presented our concerns, now it's the city's responsibility to make sure that these get implemented. And therein lies the problem. Currently, the city planning department, I believe, has come up short with what they're asking the builder to do. They need to put in the road on the west side, and obviously, the complete streets too. It seems simple to me that Save, that the Save Helena Westside solutions, such as the Western access, has been, the builder has publicly stated that, that they would be willing to do this, and that all we need now is for the city to ask them to do it. So I'm asking you to deny this so the city can do their job and ask them to do these better safety requirements. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there further opponents? All right, let's go to online. If there are further opponents in the room, if you wouldn't mind coming up, just so we know you're here. I don't want to skip people.
Okay, we have Chelsea.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your diligence on this issue and your long night. My name is Chelsea Culpon, C-U-L-P-O-N. After completing a year of AmeriCorps service in Helena and completing the first-time homebuyer's class taught by Becky Bramborg, I purchased my first home at 2670 Hauser Boulevard. That home is directly across from the Westside Woods exit that dumps onto Hauser Boulevard. I really appreciated hearing from the former owner of the property, because I am the daughter of a family who's tried to develop land for over 30 years, and my family shares the exact sentiment of the former landowner and his father. I'm also a former wildland firefighter, and I have evacuated our family of six, 12... I'm also a former wildland firefighter and I have evacuated our family of six twice in the past four years, including once while I was thirty-eight weeks pregnant. We had family and friends assist us and even though we had lots of help, I will tell you that the vehicles between the emergency vehicles, residents evacuating and family and friends helping, it was a lot of traffic and it took over an hour. I echo the sentiments of everyone who represents Save Helena Westside and I would ask that you follow their recommendations. One thing I would add about a west side exit is that, two things I would add is, we all know, and I've personally driven down the curviest road in the world in San Francisco, a lot of curves, down a very steep slope. We do not need a straight line. There are lots of ways to create roads on steep areas. And secondly, in order to maintain lower traffic and like one proponent said, he's living on Sussex land where there is a cul-de-sac and children play in the middle of the road. I'd also like to touch on something I haven't heard about tonight, which are the social determinants of health. We know that your zip code often has a larger impact on your health than your DNA. All of Westside Woods is one hundred percent car-dependent. When this subdivision is scored through online pedestrian and bicycle access models, it requires car dependency to all essential services. It scores in the lowest percentile. There is close access, possibly even walking access for residents in Westside Woods to fast food and marijuana. However, there is no easy access, especially by foot or bicycle or wheelchair, to grocery stores, to healthcare or to a lot of employment. Lastly, I would like to recall, bring your memory back to an earlier slide, which showed many blue lines on the east side of Westside Woods. All of those lines went through existing neighborhoods and existing roads, showing lots of optional exits. I will point out that almost none of those roads have sidewalks. Will improvements required by this subdivision be made to all of those roads? Will those roads then become pedestrian safe? Also, on the upper west side, Hauser Boulevard is the only emergency snow route. So now picturing all of those blue lines pointed out earlier tonight, now narrow those down to one. What if there is only one safe route when there's snow on the ground? Again, for the reasons you've already heard, I encourage you guys to follow the recommendations of Save Helena Westside and, and make this the best subdivision that it can be. It is a subdivision that Helena needs, but it needs to be one that is safe and equitable for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there further opponents?
We have another hand raised. I don't know your name, but if you wish to make public comment, please do so now and unmute yourself.
It's whoever's named A-L-L-E-J-E-F-L. All right, are there other opponents?
I see none.
Did we ever get, was it Casey?
Cassie Dov.
Cassie, no, okay. All right, other, any other comments in the room or online? Either proponents, opponents, anything we've missed so far?
I have Andrea Allen online.
Okay.
Andrea, go ahead and unmute yourself, please.
Andrea Allen, do you want to make a comment? All right, is there anybody else with a hand raised?
There is not.
All right. All right. So then, then the next piece of this will be a, if there is a brief rebuttal by the applicant, that's permissible now. I would ask that we keep it brief in recognition of the time, but if there are direct responses you want to make to comments that were made tonight, we'd be open to hearing them.
Thank you very much and I apologize for how long this is going and I, I empathetic with everybody sitting around here going through lots of information. I do have a few slides here that I'd like to address some of the comments that have been made. I think it also helps with some of the comments that you guys have made earlier. So I'm sorry, bear with me a second, I'll try to be quick about it. Of course, it's a big deal, it's a big subdivision. You haven't had a lot of these in front of you, so unfortunately, there's a lot of issues. Let me go ahead and I'm going to just pull up a couple of slides. While Derek's going to bring that up, you know, I just want to start by just saying, I hear, I hear them, I hear you. Development is tough. It's really tough. It's tough to make changes. It's tough to see traffic improved, it's tough to see the lot next to you be developed. It's tough, it's tough when you live in the county, as many of these people do, and receiving city services, to suddenly be in a situation where they're going to be, where they're going to be surrounded by city. That's tough. These are all tough things and, you know, there's a lot of, you know, really good concerns that the community has brought up. And those concerns are legitimate. Those are concerns that are not only this developer's circumstance, but there's a whole bunch of concerns that are community concerns. You know, on the west side of Helena, we have a whole infrastructure of, of roads that don't allow for pedestrian traffic and those are in the city of Helena. We have a lot of infrastructure that doesn't, that isn't conducive. If this was like the other development that you heard tonight, where we didn't have this challenge of, you know, trying to grow our city and unfortunately, a lot of that infrastructure hasn't been in place, that's one of the biggest challenges that we have. So what we can do though, with this development, is we can help leverage our bringing in development and that meets the city codes and standards. And then we can go beyond that and address some of these deficiencies that, that all of these folks are experiencing in the room. If we go away tomorrow or today, we still have safety issues. We still have no, no pedestrian issues, we still have traffic on the schools, we still have narrow roads, we still have all that today. What happens though is, is that as we, as we have proposed this complete streets, what they're going to do is they're going to allow that traffic so that you can get them through there faster because they're wider roads and they're designed for that faster speed traffic. But let me specifically speak to the Save Helena Westside's concerns, because I think they're, they're very legitimate. They have some very legitimate concerns. The first that's really important is, you know, we understand, you know, when they talk about these concerns, albeit a lot of them are community concerns, they're real and, and we really do hear them. And we're, been trying to work with them. We've met with them several times on many occasions to try to see if there's a way that we could look at that West Helena access point. We did that, we actually met with them. And we are trying to figure that out and in fact, you, we've also explored, you know, other ways of, of, that one of the, one of the comments that was interesting is to talk about design. I think we've gone through seven designs, maybe more. And it's really easy to stand up here at this microphone and spitball it. Oh gosh, they can do different, they can design this in a different way. You know, we're, we're working on that quite a bit. It's all these elements that have to come together. So the other element, you know, it's really important though, when, when you stand at this microphone, we can say whatever we want to say, but here's the reality, is that in putting this together, your city staff has carefully reviewed it. Civil engineers, both on our side as well as on the city's side, carefully have reviewed all these points. Traffic professionals, you have people that are coming and they're talking about traffic, but have they done traffic studies? Have they really analyzed this? And those traffic studies, they tell you, this is how we analyze the traffic and this is what you need to do for those improvements. You also have the Helena School District. We met with them seven times. Save Helena Westside, who has legitimate concerns, why have they not met with them Let's solve the problems because they're real problems and that's what we've come to the table for. We don't have to, we're not, it's not compulsory for us to do a lot of these improvements. We went to the school and said, tell us what you want and we'll incorporate it into our plans. You know, that's, that's the reality and then that's how this process has worked through. Derek, can you turn it back a second, please? I'm just going to hit the last couple of points here. You know, what's really interesting though, when we go through all of this, we've addressed every one of Save Helena Westside's concerns. The only one that we have not been able to accomplish a solution to, because we do not have the tools, is the access on the west side. There's a lot of conversation about, hey, let's get that access, let's make it happen. As a community, that might be very important, I'm not disagreeing. But here's the problem, we're just the developer for one bit of the city's portion of the city of Helena. So this is a city problem and the city has tools where we can extend these roads, we can build other roads, we can go ahead and acquire other land through, through other means, but that's, that's what the city is good at doing, that, I, that's not what we can do. But we are meeting the requirements under the city regulations, the state statutes and the federal, the federal regulations. Next slide I've got for you, I'll be a little bit quicker. I'm, I'm not even going to talk about this a little bit, there's a petition on the west side. I think even the Save Helena Westside recognizes that that petition, it kind of came before all these conditions and all that, so hopefully we've addressed a lot of those concerns. Next one. You know, yeah, both, there's, there's lots of people on both sides that support this and don't support it. Western access, now I think this is the most important slide because it, but because it specifically addresses this issue about the West Helena access, I don't think we can quite appreciate how challenging this is. Yes, you can curve roads, yes, you can do that, but it, there's two cliffs, it's a cliff. And the cliff going on to US twelve, which, which clearly is stated we can't do that, it's a, you know, it's a forty-foot, sixty-foot cliff. If you have been to the site, you will see what I'm talking about. Then next to the adjacent property owner where the storage units are, here's the challenges. I'm not saying we can't overcome them, but if you look, and it's kind of off of this, but I think it's on your screens, if you look through the far left corner of the slide, you'll see where the road would have to go, goes right across the entrance point to that particular landowner's property to get into their storage units. It's on the side of a cliff, it's very, very steep and it has a lot of crossloop and he has a huge retaining wall cut behind us to retain it. So these are just challenges. So I just wanted to speak to that a bit more, you know, and also, yes, this land developer has expressed an interest of selling this property or selling an easement. And these are all things that, you know, we can definitely work with the city to try to accomplish. The next thing, you know, we've talked about fire and that, not so much today, but you know, this, this is, is in an area and there's been proposals for mitigating that fire. Fires present all over the country and it's something that I, that we're never going to escape. We, this, this particular development, we're going to be providing a lot of means for reducing some of those fuel reductions and it's, it's in a more moderate area versus the rest of our city. Next slide Derek. You know, it's, it's public health and safety, that's the biggest thing. So one of the things to remember is that in public health and safety, it has everything to do with, this is what your codes are about. This is why you have regulations that say, this is how, you know, this is how you design your roads and this is how you do your traffic impact studies and this is how you provide all this infrastructure. That's what public health and safety is all about in the, in the formulation of those rules, regulations. We meet all of those. You know, then the, there's two other big issues that are brought up and that's block length is one of those. It's really important to understand, we did go back to when these codes were, when this is actually implemented and we read through all the testimony and even tonight, and in your previous subdivision, it was, I think Mr. Worth has spoken about it, the reason for the block length was all about pedestrian traffic. That's all the discussion was about, we want those block lengths so that pedestrian traffic, that was a big consideration when we created our, our trail plan going through the development. We put the pedestrian traffic through the development at all those intersections. That's the reasoning why that, that came about and then we believe that we meet that, meet that requirement. The reason that there are exceptions to your standards is because not everything fits in the same box. And in fact, per the, without these exceptions, the entire west side of Helena does not meet these exceptions. Ten percent grade coming down the road, just think about, all those roads are coming down, none of them come into the intersections at four percent grade, none of them. A good majority of Helena does not meet any of these, these standards. Hence the reason why, when these were created, it was understood that we have topography in our community, that this, this does not meet all of those regulations and even, you have flat developments.
All right, go to the next one.
You have flat developments that are being created currently that are having longer block lengths and are having dead-end streets. And I'll show you a couple of those. Keep on, this shows you where those pedestrian crossings are, so, but that, you know, explains a little bit more about those. Here's Nob Hill, so here's roads that are two thousand feet long and, you know, much farther, much longer on the other side of town and we have, we have people that live on those roads today and there's no connectivity for pedestrians through those at all. Dead-end streets. So interestingly enough, some of the folks that testified today, you know, the, really good information. You know, we have, but safety on a dead-end street or a cul-de-sac does two things. One, absolutely, you want to think about fire. We've actually are working with the fire chief of Helena, talking about maybe it's in the codes currently that allow dead-end streets. So that's, that's just, that's your standard. And in working with your fire chief, we've discussed, hey, do we have an opportunity to make, make that better? So we've committed to working with the city of Helena to go beyond the requirements to try to improve that. But notable be so, some of the folks that, that are testifying today, they live on these roads. Where's what a cul-de-sac does do and why they like them, is it is safer. Just think about the traffic. You don't have the traffic speeding down the roads. It's a fact. It's a calming device in itself. So that's why we struggle with that throughout our, throughout the United States, not just here. Next slide Derek. Here's a development that just got passed, it's being built right now. Just got passed last year. They're developing right now, how many cul-de-sacs? Fire chief, same fire depart, same police department, the sheriff oversees all of this. This is happening right now. So we're not unique, in fact, we are unique in the sense that we actually have topography, this is on flat ground. What's the difference this time? That's one of the really good questions. It's, okay, you already saw this, now we're seeing it again. I'll tell you exactly what the differences are. First of all, the design that you saw before, we had cul-de-sacs that were longer than six hundred feet. Every cul-de-sac that's in this plan is less than six hundred feet. So that is, that is, that is a change from last time. Second thing, last time, there was, I think, only about four acres that was recommended to be donated to the park space. It was on the southern portion of the property. This time, it, your parks department is, is recommending thirteen and a half acres. Go to permanent public use open space, which the city of Helena can do anything they want in. Trails, pocket parks, there's some large areas that could be flattened for larger park amenities. So it's a huge win to the city, so much, much different than last time. Quarter of this area would go into protection to the city of Helena Parks, which we all celebrate that. The next, the next is the TISs are different. So there's some references and it's kind of confusing, what happened before, what happened now. What happened now is that it's all new information. We went and did our TIS reports, the city of Helena reviewed that, had recommendations as they should, and then they went- And then they went out to a third party and said, hey, you guys review this. Why did they do all that? Because we wanna get it right. Ironically, last go around, we reached out to the other party that Save Helena Westside had hired to, to, um, to review ours and we said, hey, we want safe roads too. Let's go ahead and incorporate, you guys, come give us a hand. We'll hire you, help us. And unfortunately, their legal team said, no, you can't do that. So if our goal is to be safer and our goal really is truly to try to provide health and safety, wouldn't we all wanna be working on the same way? So that's different from last time. The last thing here, in addition to, you know, we've had a whole nother year of this being vetted. We've, we've had community meetings where we've spoken to people in communities, we've spoken with the school districts, we've spoken with Save Helena Westside. We've worked extensively with the city of Helena's staff, which is all new by the way. You guys are very fortunate. We've brought in a whole new staff that come from other parts of the country that have lots of experience in this arena. So you had the old staff with their experience, you have your new staff. Both staffs have recommended approval of this development. After analyzing, it gets all the criteria that they can. Next. I'm so sorry, but I know that was really long and I know it's boring, but I really appreciated that you gave us the opportunity to communicate with you about our development and the reasons why. I would just conclude, we have a lot of community problems. We wanna be on the side to help solu- solve those problems. One development cannot be required to shoulder the burden of all of our problems. But we are committed to continuing to work with the city, the fire department, the Save Helena Westside, the rest of the members that aren't represented that are in that community, and try to continue to improve upon this. However, this plan that you have in front of you, it does do all those things. And we're committed to continuing to work with staff to make it better. Cause this is gonna happen over lots of years. It doesn't just go boom and here we are. So, I'm, thank you so much for your patience.
Thank you. Mr. Brink, does staff have further comments they wanna make at this time?
I don't have, excuse me. That's what happens when you don't speak for a while. I don't have any additional comments. I'm not sure if any additional city staff would like to chime in, but your community development director does not have anything additional.
All right, thank you. All right, at this time, are there, uh, questions from the board before we get into our deliberation? Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, um, I would like the city staff to talk about their idea of a feasibility of a west entrance into this subdivision and what the city would have to do versus what would be, um, the responsibility of the developer and whether they've looked at the feasibility of it at all.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'm going to encourage David Knopka, our Transportation Systems Director, either he or Mark Young to speak to that effect and I can follow up if needed.
Good evening, Chairman and committee members. Excuse me. So, um, in looking at the west side, uh, access, there's a, there's a few challenges, namely the grade requirement that the city has. Number of switchbacks, um, has been some, been talked about, is, is also problematic for emergency services to make those, um, turns. The sharper the turn, the more room that's typically required for emergency services. Um, the other thing is, is, um, again, it's just a challenge. The easement that's down there, uh, is a little bit narrow for a city typical street. So we have all the amenities as in sidewalks and curb and gutter and all those. And then the other, uh, connection piece between, the name of the road escapes me, in the grand there that goes out to the Williams Signal, I believe is only fifty feet wide as well. So there'd be challenges to getting, um, all the amenities of a complete street in there. Again, not, um, impossible to overcome, but as it sits now, we wouldn't be able to, um, put in all those amenities with those narrow easements or the existing right-of-way there or easement from the county. That would have to be annexed into the city, um, so that we could make that connection as well.
Um, one other question is, in terms of financial, um, who, who bears the cost of that kind of an access road? Would it fall only on the developer or would it fall partly on the city and partly on the developer?
Chairman and, and board members, if it was conditioned by the board or the city commission that, um, it would basically be dependent upon how that condition was written. Typically, conditions are written so that they're, um, primarily the condition for the developer to come into the city or annex. So in that case, the burden would fall onto the developer. Again, um, a lot of alternatives moving forward, um, that could be explored, but, um, as of right now, there is no, um, there's just those challenges of getting that, uh, western connection in. That would take a little bit of time to, to look into.
Thank you.
Adrian.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, and my questions for staff and potentially the city attorney. Uh, a couple of questions, actually. Uh, is it even feasible or within our authority to require developer to build on private
Chair, board, uh, board member, yes. Thank you for that question because no, it is not within your authority to require, um, private property to give or an easement or sell to anyone. Uh, I realize that has been discussed as a potential, but it is not within your authority to require it.
Thank you. And, um, second question again for staff and perhaps I misheard, um, the applicant referenced that there are individuals living on the outskirts of the proposed subdivision that are currently in the county but accessing city services, is that correct? Yes. So may I inquire, what would the impact be on those individuals if the subdivision moves forward and that area is officially annexed?
Chair, board member, this is, again, Becky Doctor, city attorney. This is potentially a question that should be answered by community development or, uh, Ryan. Look at Ryan coming up right at the perfect opportunity.
Chair, committee member, members, yes, there are a few areas, uh, or a few, um, houses or residents that are out there that are on city services. They have extended water and sewer mains, uh, to be able to get city services and have the appropriate paperwork in place that they have waived the right to annex. So we could go and annex a lot of that property anyway, um, but this development, um, wouldn't impact anyone that is already on city services because we have the right to go and annex them as it is right now. An axation would be the only requirement and most of them also have a waiver of SID on roads, um, which would, we'd have to do a special improvement district. Um, so I do not see any impact for the people that have city services in it, or right now.
Thank you. And, um, this may be, this may be a silly question and forgive me for my ignorance. Um, if you have an agreement like that and you are not annexed, but not within the city limits, are you paying at the same rate for those city services?
Chair, um, committee member, yes. You pay the same water and sewer rates as everyone else.
Uh, Ryan, I have a question for Ryan, Mr. Leland. So if, uh, this proposal doesn't move forward, when would, um, Granite Street get improved?
Chair, committee member, probably would be one for David and I would just.
I got a question for David too.
But anyway, is, that it would be a, with anything, it'd be on the priority list of the city of Helena of how it gets there.
Chair, is, is it on that priority list?
Chairman, board members, um, all our streets are on our capital improvement plan. Where Granite falls exactly, I can't tell you at this point, um, but they are prioritized throughout the city. And, um, that's what we try to accomplish, um, with our road improvements, um, as we move forward through our, you know, different fiscal years.
It's on the list, but you just don't know if it'd be before, uh, the subdivision got, if it got approved.
Chairman, board members, it's not on our, in our five-year plan at this point.
That's helpful. Um, back to your first comment on the west side access or our first discussion on the west side access, it's kinda maybe like a silly question I have too. Um, first, if, if there was west side access granted and the property was acquired one way or the other from the storage unit individual, uh, it's my understanding that property is not in city limits? Is that correct or is, is it in city limits?
It's in the county.
So then, when, what's the process then to annex that property? Or does that property, for the city to require a road across that property and meet all the city requirements, when does that happen? How, who, who initiates the annexation? Cause it's not Mr. Barch's property.
I'll defer to Chris.
Is that the, west side folks initiate that or who, who initiates the annexation of the property? Cause, does that not have to happen before the city can say, let's build a road?
If, if it's not a existing right-of-way, um, or an easement, there is no path of annexation. So the city could not require that to be annexed with any particular phase of the developments. Would be up to the property owner to petition the city to annex that particular, not Sussex, the owner of that property that's outside of the city limits.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you. I think that's helpful and it sounds like the property owner is eager to help out. So maybe that's something that, that can, that can happen. Uh, I should ask this one more question. Is the city road requirement different than the county road requirement?
Vastly different, but I'll let David kinda explain what some of those differences are.
Um, chairman, board members, yes. Depending on the class of road, it, they are different. Um, typically county roads aren't, don't require the curb gutter sidewalks, boulevards, um, a lot of the, um, non-motorized components. Not to say that there aren't being put in, but, um, a typical road doesn't. You know, our road, um, section, um, contemplates parking along both sides, it con- it contemplates non-motorized traffic, um, and also a lot of those, um, elements that, uh, the other subdivision that came through with Mountain Valley Meadows, um, and this one that they commented on, you know, contemplates ball bouts, traffic calming, all that stuff.
Okay.
In our complete streets policy.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, one more question. I know it's getting late. Um, is, is there a scenario where, uh, that west side road access, if we can make it work, could be, fall under the county requirement? Yeah, and I know the city, you know, the city line would be here and then the county, uh, boundary would be to the west of that. Could the county say, could we use the county road requirements to make it work?
Uh, chairman, board members, if we're gonna be requiring it for a western access, um, because of the subdivision, I would think that we would have to follow the city standards just because ours are different and they do, um, contemplate the emergency access and our turning radiuses and such. So I would believe that we'd have to follow the city standards, not the county.
Okay. Uh, so I forgot my silly question, uh, Mr. Chair. Um, one more question for you. Is there a way that, I, I completely understand the concern from the residents on the, uh, west side and safety and, and all of that. I'm a dad too and I, I get all of that. Is there a way so to address some of the safety issues for the road just to be a fire road? Where you, you know, would have a, a gate or whatever where, uh, emergency vehicles could access the west side? It wouldn't be an egress road, you know, for, to alleviate the problems that they're, alleviate their concerns about the, the traffic by the school, but maybe a safety road? Is there an ability to do that? Or are you still gonna end up with the same requirements?
Uh, chairman, uh, chairman, board members, you're still gonna have to use, you're still gonna have to have, meet the grade requirements, you're still gonna have to meet the radius, um, requirements. And even if it is, say, a, a, uh, access road only, then, um, who owns that? Is that public right-of-way that's maintained by the city? Um, on a, you know, roadway that's not built to city standards or is that maintained by the property owner? Um, because if you're contemplating emergency access, then it has to be, um, maintained throughout the year. That includes the winter time to provide that unobstructed width for fire trucks to access. So, um, I think there'd be a lot of challenges.
Uh, Mr. Chair, thank you. I hadn't thought of that. Thanks.
Are there further questions from members of the board? Oh, James, go ahead.
Uh, thank you. James Sontag here. Um, actually, uh, on the same topic of emergency, emergency access, um, in phase one, they're saying that they're gonna have emergency access to the south, um, following the Lee and, uh, Breakman Drive. Um, I'm just curious what the, what the requirements are for that road specifically? Is it, can it just be a typical dirt road or does it have to go to local, um, road
That might be a better question for perhaps the developer to, to address or the engineer about his construction type and maybe, um, Lou, if Lou's still here, at least Chief Campbell maybe can, can address that as well.
Jeremy Fadness, WWBC Engineering, um, chair, planning board members. Thanks for that question. Um, so typically when we have phased developments, uh, we are allowed to do, uh, some emergency access to provide that second way in and out. Um, typically it's a all-weather gravel surface meeting fire code requirements. So it's gotta meet the grade requirements, the, the curve requirements, um, and it's gotta be maintained throughout the year. Uh, the developer would be required to maintain that road, uh, until it's a city street. So the following phases would then develop that into that city street, so.
Great, thank you.
All right, if there aren't further questions, I, I think we should, um, take a five-minute, oh, you have one more. Okay.
Uh, actually, if, I don't see a Mr. Ferris, is he still here?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Simple question, easy question. And then if I'm, I'm for a five-minute break too. So in your letter, uh, you talk in your part A, you talk about the safety and one of the questions, and I believe, uh, Ms. Perry brought this up too, that Sheriff Dutton, uh, weighed in on his concern? And so, just to clarify, is, is this email his, the only documentation of his concern? Was it at a meeting? I mean, was it simply just this or did he say more on the record somewhere?
Mr. Chair, members, I think that answer, that would be better answered by Ms. Perry. She was communicating.
Okay.
I didn't include all of her emails with Sheriff Dutton.
Okay.
So she probably can provide more context.
I just wanna clarify, it, it's kinda light in the terms of here's his concern, but there's, there's no enumeration of what that concern is other than, in my experience, this is a concern.
Uh, Ms. Perry's coming up, but my.
Okay.
General understanding was nothing more was asked of him. Um, so that was part of the problem, but Ms. Perry can answer much.
Sure.
Mr. Chair, board members, thank you for that question. Um, he asked to have those concerns discussed and to be included. To my knowledge, no, and that would be a question for Director Brink perhaps, who the message was sent to, but to my knowledge, they haven't had any further conversations with him. Um, but he did ask for his concerns to be addressed. Um, he has, um, communicated with us a number of those concerns. I know he has a lengthy list of concerns that he would like to have the opportunity to discuss, but he hasn't been given that opportunity yet. Similarly, Saint Andrew or Saint Peter's ambulance services has concerns that they've communicated to us, um, but they've never been asked by the community development department to, um, share those concerns.
Okay, just a quick follow-up. It's, again, I'm new to this process, this is like my first board meeting, so I'm sorry for all the questions, Mr. Chair. If this has been going on for two years, why isn't, why is it just now that Mr. Dutton has decided to weigh in, even though he wasn't asked or was or wasn't?
Sure. That's a great question. So he, to his knowledge, he wasn't asked ever to weigh in on the first application. He was asked. He was asked in an email dated December 27th from the Community Development Office. To send an email if he had any concerns. And they asked that he try to send it in by January 13th, I believe. He was advised, from what I understand, from what he told me, he was advised by members of the county. Both county community development and county commissioners that this subdivision, since it met all the design requirements, that there was nothing more he could say. While design requirements are part of it, environmental analysis and evaluation, as presented by the community development, needs to take into consideration. Negative impacts to public health and safety. So we encouraged him to send in his comments, because unless they were sent in, community development wouldn't be aware of them. So it was only after we provided that additional information that engineering standards were only part. Of what Montana state law requires be evaluated by the Community Development Department. He then, and I do have emails from him indicating that he had been discouraged from making those comments earlier. But once he, we did make him aware that that was, engineering standards were not all that was to be evaluated. Then he did send in his additional comment. But prior to that, he did not feel that his comments were going to be listened to or considered. And unfortunately, the response from Community Development in the email that we did provide to you, does seem to kind of discourage his comments by telling him he's too late. For it to be included in the findings of fact, though his email was sent before the findings of fact were ever distributed to you. So it could have been included had they chosen to do so.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, members, may I add one thing to that? Thank you very much for your patience, Mr. Chair and members. I think this speaks to the broader problem. We don't actually know what the impacts to public health and safety are, because letters like this aren't included in your packet. And we don't have information for St. Pete's, meaning we simply don't know what the risks are to this community. And as we've shown, they're pretty bad. Thanks, Mr. Chair, members.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, since I wasn't going to address it, and I don't want to be flippant about the, about the comments. But, but I will address the, this particular situation, because it's not being accurately portrayed. So yes, we did submit a letter, in addition to other outside agencies, asking for or soliciting comments on December the 27th. With a turnaround with comments due on January 13th. With intent, and we had that meeting to have a staff meeting to, to peruse and go over and consume those comments from external agencies in a, in a staff meeting. That meeting happened on January the 18th. On February the 8th, I did get a course, February 8th, almost three and a half weeks later, I did get a comment or a letter from Sheriff Dutton. Asking, or indicating he had some concerns, but didn't really address what those concerns were. And he had appreciated opportunity to address his concerns. On Friday, February 10th, I emailed Mr. Dutton back, Sheriff Dutton, excuse me. And I said, "Good morning, thank you for your email and reaching out relative to the West Side Woods development. We would absolutely welcome your comments!" Exclamation point. Unfortunately, the time to include outside agency comments into the staff review process. And to incorporate them into our draft findings of fact or reports to the various boards and city commissions has passed. That was on January 13th. Not hard and fast, but we tried to hold to that, because we have a process we have to abide by. However, the public comment period is still ongoing. And anything we receive, we pass on to the advisory boards and the city commission in their respective meeting packets. We will be sending out meeting packets today, which was when I responded to on February the 10th. Today for the planning board. If you have any comments we'd like, you would like to provide, we'd be more than happy to include that material, that in their meeting material. Otherwise, it would be distributed to them on the 21st. I gave them some dates. And again, I concluded, again, thank you for reaching out, we look forward to you addressing your concerns with this project. We've had no further communication from the, from the sheriff, other than my letter that I sent him on January, or February 10th. So to speak to why we couldn't include his comment in the findings of facts, they were drafted. We had already met with city staff, we had perused and gone over those comments, they were in a draft. The next day, we were meeting with the developer, which is per state statute, we were required to sit down and, and go over those comments. And not deliberate, but discuss those comments. We did that on February the 9th. After that concluded, we were in a position where we could not consume additional material for our findings of facts, because it would restart our review process internally. Hold a meeting with city staff, let's review it and go over it. And then meet again with the developer. To abide by my internal process is to get you a packet 10 days before the meeting, so you can have ample time to review and, and look over the material. It just was not adequate time to get you those informations. But I did encourage him to submit comments still, and they would still be part of the public record. We still do not have comments from Sheriff Dutton.
Thank you. Lois, did you have a question on that?
I kind of have a question and comment. I am not faulting the process. But it does seem to me that this is potentially a finding of fact. And I guess, I just wonder how those are incorporated when they come to your attention. But you've sent out your materials. I mean, it doesn't, the fact that the materials are published doesn't. Negate. The concern and the, and, and should have been probably incorporated somehow. And I, I can see situations where things may come up that despite your best efforts and despite. All the good work you do, it kind of surprise, it, it, it pops up. And so. I guess I'd like you to address that issue for me.
Sure. So anytime through the public process, we, we can still receive public comments, public record, you're doing this evening. With the mindset that our findings of facts are in draft form. And you will be forwarding draft finding of fact, findings of fact to the city commission. Only the city commission can actually approve and formalize those findings of facts. So up until the city commission meeting, or I can get additional draft findings of facts to the city commission. Either be it you add additional comments or conditions, which you will have to include and conclude a new finding for those conditions. They're still in draft form. So anytime here between now and city commission meeting, I can still revise those findings of facts. So it's not, they're still in draft form. So any comments of Sheriff Dutton or whoever. St. Pete's, or whoever we may have missed or not included in, in any review or, or findings, we can still include that. Up until the time the city commission takes their final action, and formalizes the findings of facts.
So follow-up, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
So could we direct you to include something like this as a finding of fact, even if we didn't draft it during this meeting? And to recommend some conditions to address it?
We could, if, if, if we had, and, and again, not being flippant, and, and, and I don't know Sheriff Dutton. And, and I don't want to get into the middle of a, of a spat between me and an elected official.
Oh, I, I want to, I want to stop you right there, because I think this is not just about Sheriff Dutton. I think we've heard a lot of it in public testimony.
Right.
So that, that's not where I'm going at all.
And, and I understand. But, but to my point, i- if you have valid findings. And unfortunately, just, just to be clear, there's nothing in Sheriff's letter that actually gives me data, explains why he's, he has an issue. He's never addressed the why. So there's no data to back up a finding. So I could not include it here this evening, because I just don't have data to back up the finding.
But Lois, I, I would add, I mean, we can make a motion to amend the findings of fact, if we want to do that. And to put conditions on that. And that, that certainly was in our purview when we get to the discussion part of all of this. Did you want to add to that?
Chair O'Connor. Chair O'Connor, thank you. I wonder if you would find it appropriate if I could help clear up the record about whether or not this circumstance has actually been considered. By the city staff in its staff report, by asking the question to both David Knopki, whether or not. There was a consideration for the west side access, and to Chief Campbell.
Go ahead.
I would just ask Chief Campbell then first, if he would, would. Address whether or not this west side access was, was considered. And then same question to David Knopki.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, my understanding is there was some discussion through the Fire Marshal's office about what the west side access possibility would be. Including a discussion about, not a private, but a fire or emergency dedicated access. And to echo Director Knopki's point, the restrictions on those access points aren't just whether it's gated and who can drive on it or not. It is the width, turning radius, and all-weather and drivable surface that comes into play in terms of emergency access. Is, I hope that answers your question.
Chairman and Board Members, there were discussions on the west, western access. Obviously, there's a lot of challenges to accommodate that. We tried to look at it from our, our aspect from emergency services and what would be required. That's where we get into the requirements of the widths and the, and the grades and everything like that.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Just before we get to you, Marsha, did you need to say something else?
Chair O'Connor, thank you. I just wanted also just clarify for everyone's reminder that in the staff report and on the record, there was. Also a discussion about the requirements of code requiring to access in, into and out of the subdivision. And there are, as you saw in the report, four access into and out of the subdivision. That concludes the city's required look into access into and out of the subdivision. And the conclusion by the city that that was met.
Thank you. Adrian.
Just a quick comment, Mr. Chair, in deference to Lois, who, I don't know, Lois, if you have a copy of this letter? And if you're thinking about a motion, I think perhaps it would be a good idea for her to get a copy of the letter. Because Sheriff Dutton does not specifically call out concern.
I read, Adriana, I read that in the public testimony. And I understand that Sheriff Dutton doesn't. But I also understand that we've heard plenty of public testimony today from other people who know what they're talking about. And I share their concerns after my work on the zoning advisory panel and understanding what I do about wildfires. I don't know how exactly to address it. But I think that egress from that subdivision, if, if we face an urban wildland fire, problematic, problematic. And it's not just for the subdivision. It, it, the applicant has a good point, this is a community problem. But I guess I wonder, we know it's a community problem, do we prove something that might make it worse? That, that's, that's my conundrum right now.
Thank you, Chairman, and Lois, please understand, I certainly wasn't making an opinion on where you were going. I just wanted to make sure you had a copy of the letter.
No, I, I read it before the meeting.
Thank you, Marsha.
Yes, this is Marsha Idell. I guess one of the questions I have, I've heard in several contexts, discussion about, you know, considerations of a west access. And use of the word challenges. And I don't know whether that's code for impossible? Because to me, a challenge is something that you can often meet. You know, with a little innovation or something like that. And I'm just not sure, I mean, if, if it's really not possible, or if it's just going to be really difficult. But po, but is possible. And I'd like to know.
Go ahead, Mr. Barch.
Thank you very much, I really appreciate the opportunity. To your point, yes, anything's possible. It just depends on how much, you know, resources you put into it. How, how many of these buildings do you have to tear down that are on this person's property? How, you know, for them to get their access? And all of this is possible. So yeah, you, all of it's possible. It just gets to the conversation of what's, what's practical? What does, because this gets into the realm of what does a city, you know, what's, what's its priorities? And if the city's priority is, is to make this happen, like I said, if you approve the subdivision, this conversation doesn't have to end. This portion of our development is in latter, latter phases. We have time, if the community and the city want to come together and work with this landlord and see if we can go ahead and, and. You know, work with him to get his property? And to go ahead and do all that stuff. You know, we're, we're, we're not opposed to helping with that process. But to our development, you know, it can proceed without that happening today. But we, we haven't closed the door on that conversation. And another point I would make is that you do have an access point. And that is La Grand Cannon Boulevard. And we actually, our, our top lots actually abut it. You could actually go on there if you needed to, and that's a flat road. So, but that would require, again, the city of Helena, who has now put that into perpetual easement. You would have to ask the city then change the easement requirements that would allow for that to become public access. Because I believe that has gone into a public domain where it's, it, it's for pedestrian use and for public. So, but there's options. We're not, again, later phases. If you guys come back, we come back at the table, and we want to continue to work through these challenges, we're here. And I just wanted to point that out. So back to, yeah, anything's possible, but to be honest with you, the, the word impossible is closer to possible in this case. Just because you're looking at millions of dollars, you're looking at huge retaining walls of some sort. You know, and picture this, you know, retaining wall is kind of like the one that's in Reader's Village, right? You drive up, huge retaining walls, things like that, in order to feasibly try to make this happen. And then the city of Helena's water, main water supply, it goes across the top portion of this. So then we have to address that, is how do we deal with that? It's, you know, from a community's perspective, and how would that road work in? So hopefully, I answered your question, sorry I so long-winded.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, let's, let's take a five-minute break, and then let's come back and have our discussion and figure out what we're going to do moving forward. So we'll come back at 10:40.
Recording in progress.
All right, are there further questions from Planning Board Members? Oh, were you, you can ask questions if you go. Okay, all right, well then, let's bring it into discussion. I, I think probably some discussion is helpful before we try and make any motions. So that we can just kind of figure out what we want the motions to be. Lois, you unmute it, does that mean you want to kick us off?
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, no, I, I was just getting ready for discussion. I'll mute myself.
You're allowed to be unmuted, it's fine.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I. I, I, I speak in the form of discussion to say that I. I feel deeply empathetic with the developer in this case. For where we are at this point. I don't believe. That the city has developed a sufficient. Record that covers all the possibilities, such as easements. And considerations to satisfy 76-102. And I, I feel that that's because, for whatever reason. The communications between the developer and the city has not been productive. If there was a need for things to change with the developer. And, and what the developer was proposing, so that we wouldn't be in what I call a somewhat. Stressed exception. Argument for accepting what's there. argument for accepting what's there, maybe we would get somewhere. But when you look at 76-102, you talk about promoting public health, safety, and general welfare by regulating a subdivision of land. Well, I'm not sure we've gotten enough about general public health, welfare, and safety to help for us to be able to truly consider this matter. And then when we go down and we talk about subsection, or subsection three, and it says lessen congestion in the streets and on highways, I don't think there's any way we can answer that one positively at this point. Nor do I think that the city has done anything to provide us with an opportunity to answer that in a positive manner. I grew up on the west side of town. I know what those streets are like. I had kids, grandkids, who went to school at C.R. Anderson. And I've seen, I've been picking them up and doing things like that, and I know how terrible the traffic is. And adding any more traffic to that area is nonsensical. And I say it's nonsensical because no matter where you start on the west, in order to get where you want to go in Helena, you're going to go east. Now, that means Granite Street's going to take a lot of traffic. Or it means that you're going to be using Hauser, and Hauser is an awful street right now. And if you go on any of those other streets without the sidewalks, and you see the traffic that develops like around C.R. Anderson at school time, before and after, you realize that all we're doing is creating more problems for transportation in the City of Helena. Now, does that mean that that should be held against the developer? No, I don't think it should. But what it does say is it's about time the city gets off its chair and says, we got to do something to start correcting these issues. The lack of sidewalks and complete streets in Helena is a plague. And it's a plague that was created by developers who got the city to approve putting in streets without sidewalks, and that weren't wide enough or weren't complete. So now, we're here with a developer, where I very honestly have to tell you, I'm greatly impressed with how hard they worked. But I'm not sure that anything they could have done would really get me to the point of trying to give them the benefit of the doubt when the city is the one who's causing the problem. And for that reason, I want you to know that I'm going to abstain in any further vote on this, because I truly believe the system on what's happening was broken long ago, and it truly needs to be readdressed.
Is there further discussion? Go ahead.
I guess a couple of comments that I heard. I heard that the developer has worked hard with working at least the cities, with the city staff, at addressing issues. And I heard that the developer and the concerned citizens and the schools, everyone was trying to work really hard at coming to some solutions and mitigation alternatives that were acceptable, maybe not to everybody involved, but at least, you know, we folks kind of met in the middle, and we're able to come up with some suggestions, at least how we can move forward. As far as traffic goes, even with, it's my understanding, even with a west-side access that could be pulled off, traffic on Granite Street is going to be more than it is today. That's just going to happen, because you're going to have people going west, and you're going to have people going east. So, what you have today is going to change. Now, regardless if this gets approved, because I also heard that there's all these empty lots on the west side that are going to be filled in. And I don't know, someone said 100 houses, 100 vacant lots. That's as many, I think, almost as many as there are going to be in this subdivision. Where's the plan for that? I mean, when is Granite Street going to be fixed for those people that move in? I believe I understood from the city staff and from the plan that Granite Street would be improved long before the city gets to it. I think that's a benefit. I am, I feel, I can't spell the word, I feel for the west-side residents, too. I mean, it's going to be, it's difficult. They're in a difficult situation now. Kids walking down the street, in the middle of the street, that's not good. I live off of Goldfish. We don't have sidewalks. Everyone walks in the street, and it's terrible. If I had an opportunity for someone to come in and give me some sidewalks and walkable streets sooner than five, 10 years from now, I probably would jump at that. I also think if we could, again, pull off a west-side access to help alleviate some of that, I think that would be awesome. That sounds like that's going to be a lot of work, but it sounds like everybody's willing to try to dive into that. As far as the safety end goes, I feel there's going to be more people there, so sure, there's going to be absolutely an evacuation process crisis, there's going to be more cars on the road. I get that, that'll be, slow things down. But we're already in that situation in terms of wildfire, wildland, wildfire situation on the west side. I live in the mountains on the east side. We're in that same situation today without a new development. And if a new development's going to come in and help knock down some trees and make things so it's a little bit safer, new water hydrants and all that kind of thing, that's, seems like a benefit and addresses some of the safety issues. La Grande Canyon now, it just has a gate. If there's a fire, I'm pretty confident the fire department's going to cut the lock and drive a fire truck down Grand Canyon, whether it's public, a walking route only, zoned as walking or riding or biking. I'm pretty sure if there's wildfire, they're going to drive a truck in there. I think they actually do now with spraying weeds. But anyway, I just feel that, I feel for the west side. It's, they're in a tough spot, but I also feel the city has to start at some time. Sometime, the city has to say, we got to fix those streets, we need more housing, we got to work with people. Expanding the tax base is not a bad idea, because I think the legislature's working on how to screw that down. So, I think my, and then, I guess, my last rant here is, I feel like, reading through the staff report, the staff addressed their legal obligation. I feel like they've met everything that they were supposed to meet. So, I'd have a hard time saying that, let's kick it back and kind of start over. I feel like our obligation is to say, has all the legal obligations been met? Now, I understand that there are folks that believe they haven't been met, but I trust our city attorney and our staff that they believe they've got a defensible case, and they have met those. Yeah, I guess, those are my comments.
Are there further comments?
I'll piggyback on my fellow commissioner and just say that, at the end of the day, Helena is in a housing crisis. We are absolutely in a housing crisis. And by no means do I think that we should put our residents into a situation where their safety is compromised. And I do not believe that this subdivision does that, although I think that things could be better, and I have a great amount of empathy as well for the residents. But we do have a housing crisis. We do have roads that are currently in disrepair. And my daughter went to C.R. Anderson, and I also remember how scary it was picking her up. I would love to see more housing surrounded by bumpouts, traffic calming, the electric signs that always make me slow down. So, I appreciate that we have an opportunity to work with a developer who's willing to put so much into our communities as well.
Are there further comments? Oh, okay, he's cut off on my screen, sorry. Go ahead, James.
Yeah, James Sontag here. Yeah, no, I agree with my fellow commissioners. I do have a concerning, I do have a concern with flowery court. That specific access point to that Boulevard, it's going to be the only connection to the rest of that condo, block six, that they're going to be having there, which is going to extend that quite a bit. I don't know, obviously, like they said, that's not part of this agenda, which, to me, seems like we're not going to be putting enough foresight into that addition when that comes, because I'm not sure what would be possible to be able to circumvent that or having another accessway or cutting that off somehow. But, yeah, I just wanted to bring that up, that that was my only concern.
Are there other comments?
Mr. Chairman, Lois, I guess I'm conflicted. I think the applicant has done a good job. I think they've addressed a lot of issues. I know I'm going to take a look at cul-de-sacs and future plots that we look at a lot more differently than I have up until now. And I also know that a lot of the problems that we're talking about tonight exist whether this subdivision goes in or not. You know, we still have traffic problems on those roads. We still have evacuation protocols on those roads. We still have school safety issues on those roads. But this subdivision will aggravate those, as will the other undeveloped lots, which eventually will be developed. And I guess the very first question I kind of asked about what the city role is in a western access point to this subdivision. Maybe we'll get to this in, if this subdivision goes forward, maybe we'll get to the western access in future meetings. But I don't think the western access is solely on the developer. And that's because, first of all, they can't guarantee, well, can't force them to build on private land. And the city has to have some part in that, too. And it has to, it has to be involved. And I know one of the things on the zoning advisory panel that we were all very interested in were these partnerships between people who want to create housing and create subdivisions and local governments, and what local governments might do to partner with it. So, I don't know how we ever get there, and I don't know if it's part of our approval process tonight. But I think that I, as a person, as a member of this commission, don't want to let go of that whole western side access. I think it's really important, particularly for continued development in the area, that people be able to get out of there or emergency services vehicles be able to get in. So, I guess it's, I'm kind of looking at this decision, and if this goes forward tonight, I just want us, I guess, to be aware that, I don't know how the rest of you feel, but I'd still like to see the city continue to work on a western access with the developer for future phases. So, that's my two cents, Mr. Chairman.
Are there other comments?
Yes.
Marcia, your hand up, the left side of my screen, I don't know. Go ahead.
I agree about the housing crisis. I'm pretty, I'm extremely worried about the fire issue on the mountain at that spot. I'm just extremely worried about it. And I wonder whether it's possible for the city to look at, you know, this, our need for housing, this development goes in, and to re, maybe revisit their five-year plan for which streets get attention? It may or may not be that they've chosen things that are, you know, have a much greater safety issue, but I wonder, I wonder about that. It feels to me as though those two things might be able to go hand in hand and say, well, we're going to revisit this. We're going to look and see whether there's any way for us to move these issues forward. I live in a development where, that was done in 1960. There's not a sidewalk to be seen. That's what, how many years ago? Eight, you know, 60 years ago? And I see kids walking down Broadway every day on their way to school. This is not a new problem. But, and I wonder if it's just not easy for the city to sort of kick the can down the road in these situations. But, you know, when you really do balance a housing crisis versus a potential for, you know, a fire, it's very difficult to do. But I do think that the housing issues are essential for the community, and maybe the city can take a look at their, you know, revisit some of their priorities.
Are there further comments?
Chairman, and maybe it's a question for staff. Is it possible to request an addition to the annexation conditions that request an ongoing conversation following the completion of each phase and prior to moving on to the next? I know that there are pieces of legislation that offer significant amounts of money to municipalities for infrastructure development, and perhaps as we move forward, an opportunity will come out that provides that access from the west side?
So, you're proposing adding a condition to the preliminary plat recommendation to add a condition of annexation to address an issue? I'm trying to formulate exactly what.
Thank you. So, I'm looking specifically at the conditions on page nine of the report. And you can sure tell me if I'm way off base. But here, we have, we have requirements that come through each phase. And perhaps we don't, perhaps this is outside of our purview, but requesting a review in conjunction with the developer and the city, and I'm also going to agree with my fellow commissioners, it is not the developer's job, but because the access needs to come from the developer's subdivision, is it possible to request that the ongoing evaluation continue with each phase?
And I think the issue we have is that that's in the annexation, and we're considering the plat, which is a different issue. Well, the annexation, we're not considering. It was given to us so that we're aware of it, but it's not part of what is in front of us tonight.
Mr. Chairman, I was thinking the same thing. I was leaning towards like... I was leaning towards like a motion that would adopt the findings and, and recommendations and findings of fact, but also a recommendation to the city commission that they consider some type of agreement or some type of process where that west side access is somewhat mandated of everybody to try to come to some resolution, and maybe the resolution is, just can't do it. But also, I heard the developers say that some of the limitations for access were the city's current codes of, I'll get this wrong, but like the 4%, the 10%. And maybe there's some variance or some type of work that the city commission could agree with that would loosen that up so, or fix somehow, so they can maybe connect those to, I think it's the two cul-de-sacs. But something, I'm with my fellow commissioner, usually in legislative work, there's like a kind of a whereas clause where you just say, whereas, we want the city commission to do this. The Lois Chisholts. But something like that where it catches our deliberation and kind of thoughts of where we would like to see it go.
So, not to be harsh, please forgive me, but annexation's not in your lane. Sounds bad. But this would be an appropriate condition for the preliminary plat. But keep in mind, this is a phased subdivision. Each phase, upon initiation by the developer, starts a review of findings and review of facts as each phase comes online. You won't see that, but the city commission will see that. So if there's new information, new findings, and you'll see why in the, in the conditions, there's a lot of conditions regarding phases. We did that intentionally. So when the second phase gets initiated and there's triggers that the first phase caused some misalignment with requirements or code or whatever, then the second phase would trigger maybe a, an additional review or a condition. Perhaps this might be one, just to let you aware that maybe when we, when we do that, that triggers from a staff standpoint that, oh, phase two. There's some mitigating factors that we didn't really know about. Phase one triggered it, we need to address it and bring it up as maybe a new condition that the city commission may need to attach to phase two. I just want to be, make you aware of the phased subdivision process. But you absolutely, if, if, if it is a recommendation to attach it to the preliminary plat, I, I don't know how you would massage the language, but memorialize the, the fact that there's still going to be ongoing discussions moving forward with cul-de-sacs and the west side connection and that sort of stuff. That's not gonna stop. I think, you know, staff's fairly comfortable saying that upfront, that can, discussion's not gonna stop about these issues that have been addressed. Condition it, I think if, if you massage that appropriately, it might be applicable to the preliminary plat recommendation. Just not sure how to, how to put that in a, put your deliberation about these topics in a condition.
Lois?
Mr. Chairman, I might have a suggestion, rather than us try to wordsmith it tonight, that we, if, if we recommend approval or forward this to the commission, that we also ask them, as part of their approval, or we, we ask the staff to present to the commission for their consideration, another condition that requests something that we look at this again, and that we also put in our recommendation to the city that, I guess, I guess I expect the city to be a bit of a partner on this. I mean, we've all talked tonight about how we weren't forward-thinking and planning. There aren't sidewalks in all the streets. We can be forward-thinking here, because I think of west side egress from this subdivision would be a good thing for the whole neighborhood, not just that subdivision. And I think the city has to have a part in that. I don't think it can be just the developer because of the conditions present, like private land and another annexation, a whole nother property. So I guess my suggestion would be that we make a separate recommendation and ask the staff in its presentation to the city commission, if that's the way we're going, that they have a condition that would effectuate this kind of an approach as the phased development goes along.
I want to throw a thought out there, and then I think it sounds like, from what everybody's saying, we're probably ready to make a motion. But, I mean, I, I'm a little concerned that there's some holding against, seems a little bit wrong. But there's a general notion that infrastructure is currently problematic, and that we might be holding that against the developer who's trying to actually fix some of that. And so I, I want to stay away from that to the extent that we can. And I realize it's putting burdens on the infrastructure to build literally anything. And so, I mean, there are burdens, the, the point of mitigation, to some extent, is that. But to the extent that we're worried about how development has been done over the last 50, 100, 150 years, I want to make sure that that's not being held against the applicants here. The, the piece that concerns me is sort of back where I started the entire conversation, which are the exceptions, and to me, sort of the, the self-inflicted, for lack of a better way to put it, aspects of the development. The, the street length and the, the dead ends here. I mean, reading those standards, I, they're not exactly a model of clarity for what is or is not required. But, you know, street length has to be 600 feet, except when a longer length is needed to meet grade limitations, the existing built environments, water bodies, or railroad crossings, or industrial uses. There are grade limitations here, but are, are they just the fact of development? And perhaps the, the property is not particularly suitable to this development? Or perhaps it just can't hold this many units? I realize that there's a housing problem, we need to be building more. But there is a street length limitation. It's not ours to say that it's wrong, and it's not ours to say that the purpose of it should supersede what the actual text of it is. And so I'm concerned that we allow an exception based on something that maybe it just needs to be a different design, even if it doesn't lead to as many units. Same thing for dead ends, frankly. Necessary due to compelling circumstances such as enhancements of safety, compliance with complete streets, mitigation of apps, access obstructions, or future extension. None of those, such as clauses, seem to be met here. And I'm a little unclear that there's a compelling circumstance other than the desire to put properties here. I desire to put properties there also, and everywhere else we need more. But I'm, I'm unclear that those situations are something that meet the exception requirements. And so then it's unclear to me that the development without those exceptions can move forward as it's been described.
Mr. Chairman, I, I just, a couple of thoughts. In new development around town, even one of the ones that the developer in this case built, there's maybe variances or exceptions. But I, I feel like they still get built. And wrong, right, or indifferent, I feel like we need to fix that. I agree, it shouldn't, we shouldn't have exceptions. But do we start with this one? And then going forward, how do we rectify all the ones that this board or the city commission has approved in the recent past? When, when do we start saying enough's enough? Is it with this one? And we don't do that anymore, or is it the next one?
I'm fine with exceptions, as long as the requirements for the exceptions are met. And that's my concern, is I'm not clear that the requirements for exceptions are met. And harkening back to the last time we saw this, when it was being treated as a variance, I mean, that was specifically called out in there as basically can't be self-inflicted. And we encountered the same problem there. So no, to the extent that the board thinks that there is a compelling circumstance for the dead ends, great, let's grant it. I'm not clear that that's met here.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
And same for the street length exceptions, too.
I misunderstood word.
No, you're.
Sorry.
So I know we heard from the applicant that there were significant topographical restrictions, and I saw that in the staff report. And, and to me, as a layman, that, that sounded very reasonable. But I'm hearing you that maybe that's not enough information, and perhaps would it be worth tapping the applicant who's in the room to discuss that a little bit further?
Honestly, I believe the topical crap, I mean, I'm not disagreeing that there's a cliff there, right? I mean, if there's a cliff, there's a cliff, and I take them at their word on the topographical limitations. My point is, just because there are limitations, doesn't mean all property is suitable for development, even if we want it, right? I mean, so to the extent that this design, as, has been presented, encounters those, maybe you can't build there, to this extent, right? I mean, there's certainly gonna be some portions of this that you could certainly build some stuff on. But maybe you can't put 100 units and 80 condos on this property because of the topographical limitations in that way. Anyway, that's my opinion. I'm, I have those concerns. I do think we're at this point ready for a motion, from what everybody has said. So I, if someone would like to make a motion, I think now is the time to entertain it.
Mr. Chairman, I can try to do that, and hopefully staff will help me out. So I would make a motion to adopt the findings of facts and the staff recommendation in section eight. And to approve those, the recommendation by the staff to approve the, moving this forward to the city commission with the following conditions listed in section eight. That's not very precise, but is that kind of what we're looking for?
So I, I believe the, the motion is to accept the findings of fact, the conclusions that there will be impacts on the, the, there will be impacts, and that the staff recommendations will mitigate those impacts.
Yeah, that's really good.
Is that, is that your motion?
That's the motion.
All right, is there a second for that motion?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Is there discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'm probably out of order here, and I'd, I'd like your guidance. I can vote for this motion if we also adopt a motion making clear that we would like the, somehow to try to get a condition installed that would continue to look at a western egress route from this subdivision, and that the, the city be part of that effort. I could support this motion going forward if we could also do that. And I, I, I realize I, I'm kind of out of order here. I just, I just hope we could do that. I'll vote for this motion, assuming we can also pass another. I'll put it that way.
So Lois, I think what you want is an amendment to encourage staff to do that. I, I would suggest, from what we've heard from staff, that we probably don't want to base a condition on the plat for that purpose. But we do want to encourage staff to engage in further conversations about west side access to the subdivision. Would that satisfy you, or do you want it to be a condition?
Mr. Chairman, I think what I'll do is I'll offer a separate motion after this one, and hopefully go forward, because I want it to be pretty strong. I, I really feel like, you know, in, in previous discussion, I never meant to cast a backward-looking focus on everything we've done wrong. Mostly, I want to say, okay, we know that happened. Let's, let's have a forward-looking focus so that we can try to avoid those mistakes three to five years from now, when we can see them now. And that, that was really the point I was trying to make. And that's what the point of the next motion will be. I guess I, thank you for letting me ramble. It's late.
Mr. Chairman, I would withdraw my motion.
Oh, you don't have to withdraw your motion, please don't.
Well, but then, but if we don't do that.
I'll offer my motion after this, I promise I will.
We can do that, and if we want to do rules stuff, then we'd have to have the second withdrawn. I don't want to get into all that. But we, we will make sure to recognize Lois following the vote on this motion. Is there further discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chair, if I may, is this motion, just for clarity, is this motion for the exclusions as well? Does this comprehend that?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, I'm not.
Do you mean the exceptions?
Yes, the exceptions.
Then yes. Because those are included within the staff recommendation.
Okay, gotcha. Yes, I mean, I'm not, I'm not comfortable going with all those dead ends. Same, same situation we had before, when we all voted not to allow those variances. They just don't make sense. Because we're voting on the plat, right? The plat itself that came with plans, they, they went through. Obviously, like you had mentioned as well, there's, there's alternatives to alleviate these issues and these dead ends, which I don't think has been resolved at all.
Sorry, just to clarify, James, so are you wanting to amend to exclude the exceptions? Or you are just letting us, I, I just don't want to, I don't want to make sure we're clear, sorry.
Yes, I mean, in, 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 I would like to make an amendment that we exclude the exclusions.
Okay, so is your motion to exclude all exceptions as to all dead ends and street lengths? All, or one or both of those categories?
Yes, so let me, let me reset that. Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we exclude the dead end exclusions, but accept the, the long road exceptions.
All right, there's been a motion to amend to exclude the dead end exceptions from the staff report. This is at section seven of the staff report. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it, so we can vote on it.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Is there discussion on the motion to amend?
May I ask if, am I understanding correctly? If we do not agree to the dead ends, doesn't that require an entire redesign?
I don't know that I can, I, we, I suspect it would be speculation, but probably.
So in, in, in light of that, at some point, we have to recognize that local government and, wow. So I'm, I'm, I think I'm conflicted as Lois, and I can no longer see you, so that's upsetting.
Did we lose them, or you just can't see them? Okay.
So I think we're, we're in a quandary here, where when we ask developers, when we tell developers we're in a housing crisis, and we ask them to put millions of dollars into land and planning and years of lawsuits and coordinating and coming up with solutions. And then, and we know that we need all those things. And we develop, we, we approve subdivisions all the time with dead ends. And I understand that there are issues that make this one more concerning. I just don't know if it's enough to scrap the project and ask the developer to go back. So it is like 11:25, and I think I'm rambling and no longer making sense. But I think that we're creating an issue where we are, we are anti-housing. We are anti-development, and not because we, not because we don't like the applicant, or not because we, we have arbitrary rules that we assign to some developers and not others. And I think that that's a problem. And it's not faulting the, the, my fellow commissioners who have wonderful opinions. It's a lack of clarity, and it's a lack of uniform application.
I don't know that I disagree with you. I, I will say, I don't, I don't know that this. I, I will say, I don't, I don't know that this board has been inconsistent in that application. I also, sort of back to where I was, I, I'm concerned, I, I, I don't think it's ours to say the city commission got it wrong, and therefore we don't apply that, I think we need to apply what the current statute is, code is, even if we think it's wrong. And maybe we should tell them it's wrong, but I don't think, I mean, you know, we're, at the end of the day, here, to me, we're making a recommendation to the city council of what we think they should do based on their statutes. We may think that they're incorrect, we may not, I, I don't want to speak for anyone or everyone on that, but to me, again, it comes back to what are the standards, and as I read them, I have a tough time getting there. I may think we should change the standards, I certainly think we, I would love some definitions, but that's a, you know, those are separate from what we have today, I think. Is there further discussion on the motion? Further discussion? All right, seeing none. So the motion is to remove the exceptions relating to dead streets from the staff report, to amend, to remove the, the dead end streets from the staff report. All those in favor of the motion to amend? Signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any in favor? Okay, so then, oh, James, sorry, okay. And I'll be in favor of that as well. All those opposed?
No.
No.
Aye.
All right, so the noes have it, the amendment fails. So we're back to the principal motion to adopt the findings of facts and mitigation conditions, and the, the staff recommendation. Is there further discussion on the motion? Further discussion? Sorry, normally I do this that faster, and it's eleven thirty at night. Any further discussion on the motion? All right, let's, let's vote on the motion again to adopt the findings of facts and the staff's recommendation, that there are impacts and that they will be mitigated with the staff's recommendations. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
All right, the motion carries. Lois, you're online. Do you have another motion you'd like to make?
I do, and if I, I'm going to try my hand at this motion. If staff is concerned that I've done something that is not possible or potentially illegal, I would like their advice. I move that this board request that the staff prepare a condition to present to the, to the city commission that would require continuing evaluation of a Western egress from the planned subdivision to allow it to join with Highway Twelve where appropriate. I would also like the staff to convey this board's hope that the city would be part of the solution in helping to create this Western access.
All right, the motion, I'll probably say it's shorter, but not to oversimplify, but that the staff work on a, a Western egress, and that the city should be part of the solution in finding that Western egress. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, is there discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman, I want to clarify that the motion would actually take the form of a recommended condition to address a finding, a fact regarding public safety for emergency services access. And I, I'm not trying to commit, I'm not trying to come up with a new finding of fact, I think that was there all along. That was there all along, the city considered it, so I, I just would like them to prepare a potential mitigation that would go in the conditions to present to the city commission to include. Hopefully, they would work on it with the developer, developers and the citizens that are going to be affected by the subdivision.
All right, I want to defer to the city attorney on whether we're out of order with regard to adding a condition after approving the motion, the prior motion.
Chair, members of the board, I think this is out of order. I also think that there is, I have concerns about proposing a condition that would be outside the authority of the planning board to actually adopt. I would argue that, if I had to, that this was just a condition to consider something, and we could just think about it, and, and it would be done, because the language I'm hearing is, you know, propose a condition to present to the city commission for evaluation, and that would satisfy a condition, though I'm not sure the board member was intending for that to be the only condition. So I think there are a number of concerns I have about this, not the least of which that it's out of order, because we've already adopted, adopted something that approved the subdivision without these condition.
As, as restated, do you maintain your second? I just want to confirm, because that was fairly different from what I said, and frankly, understood candidly, sorry, Lois, I didn't mean to mischaracterize.
Oh, that's all right. With the commission's approval, can I withdraw my motion and state another one?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I would move that this board forward to the city commission our concerns that there is no Western egress, and we think it's very important, and we would urge the city to work with the developer to try to find a way to add that to the plot, to the subdivision plot, whatever. Would that, would that work?
Ms. Doctor, are you comfortable with that motion?
Chair O'Connor, members of the board, I, it's, if I'm understanding, it would just be to forward concerns to the city commission, something I think that we would have done anyway, and I'm not concerned with it in that regard. If I would ask clarification about, find a way to condition it, that's kind of getting to this point I made earlier, but if it's just something to forward to the city commission, we would have done that anyway.
All right, is there a second? All right, it's been moved and seconded, to, to forward a concern of the board regarding Western egress to the city commission. Is there discussion on the motion?
Quick question, so it, it's really like just advisory, kind of, saying, hey, don't forget, even though you guys are going to do it, too?
As I understand the motion, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I think, to me, I'm doing this because I heard the concerns of the citizens, and I think it is a way to address traffic issues, and I think if there's continued development there, it, it will help, and it may help the whole neighborhood. And I think the city has a part in making that happen. And as a planning board, I guess I'd like to be part of that ongoing discussion to see what happens. But I want, I want to support the public testimony we heard, and some of the main concerns that we heard. I think they're valid.
All right, is there further discussion on the motion? Any further discussion? All right, so it's been moved to forward concerns about Western egress to the city commission. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, I believe that that closes our second public hearing item on the West Side Woods Phase subdivision. I presume we have no other business tonight.
There is no other business. I would, I would note that at the March twenty-first meeting, the city will be bringing forward an update on the Railroad Neighborhood Plan, nothing actionable, but we would love it if you would all be able to attend.
All right, so the next scheduled meeting is March twenty-first, where we will be hearing more from the city, and I believe you said earlier that the county doesn't have anything on their agenda.
Yes, Director McNally emailed me and told me that the county will have nothing to bring forward to you in March, so it should be a much shorter meeting for everyone.
Set the bar low. Thank you. So now is the opportunity for the public to comment on any matter not on the agenda, but within the jurisdiction of the Consolidated City-County Planning Board. Is there any comment from members of the public, again, on something not on the agenda? Any public comment? Not seeing anybody jump up and leaping to the microphone, so we're going to go with no. And so we're adjourned. Thank you all very much for coming tonight, for your input, thank you all for, to the staff, for all the hard work that was put into all of these things, and also for being here until eleven thirty at night. Everybody have a good night.